Okay, we should be on.
You have captions, video?
Yes. Excuse me.
Okay. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Motion to call the meeting to an order, is there a second please?
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any board member who has a disclosure or conflict of interest regarding the items before us this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. That being said, would the village clerk please read the open meeting compliance certification or something that's similar thereof?
I'm going to say we have no one online and no one in the room, but I'm going to speak to myself. Everybody, please give me your name and address if you're online, please put it into the Q&amp;A and I'll be happy to ask a board question. If you want to speak, please raise your hand. And everybody try to be nice to each other tonight.
And name and address.
Oh yes, and please provide your name and address, even if you're online.
Okay, so with that being said, let's start with public comment. We got nothing, okay.
Take me, take me now.
Okay, okay, so anyway, okay, so treasurer's report, please?
We do not have a bill pay tonight. The board did approve a bill pay last meeting. We were hoping to get something together and just didn't come to fruition with the time limit. So, but we will hit you at a later time. So, but we did have the July financials, which were supposed to be, this is all the last meeting, so is there any questions? Everything's looking like we're stable, it's moving forward as predicted, nothing outrageous. I'm looking at August right now and everything's coming this, I anticipate so far, I should be able to hopefully report any.
Okay.
Any questions from the board on the financials? Nope. I do not. So if I can have approval for the financials for water and sewer?
I'll...
I mean general and sewer?
Yeah, general, yeah.
Well, at the same time?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the July financials for general and sewer.
I second.
Nope, were you done with that?
That's all good, I just said as presented.
Oh, as presented, okay.
I second, please.
Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. I thank the board for their patience, conference was wonderful and lots of stuff could bring forward from conference that we didn't learn. Unfortunately, again, thank you for your patience, we needed an out last week, we probably had to hit me on the way back.
A number of county clerks, right?
Yeah, really, you know, we love my Monroe County clerks and I thank them for the gifts they give me all the time, so, that's all I'll say.
Well, we're glad you're on the mend, that's pretty great. Well, I was gonna, you know, usually we move the minutes to the end, but do you think we can kind of hit the minutes?
Sure, and really quick, since we are having this meeting on top of another meeting, quick meeting, and then we're supposed to have a meeting next week, would the board like to table next week and just go to the last meeting of the month and catch up?
We already have two.
That way you're not doing three weeks in a row. I realize that is a heavy schedule and it's a lot to try to put together three packets.
You know, can we see what we feel like at the end of the meeting and see where's the...
Yeah, just let me know because I'm just feeling, you know, you're meeting, meeting, meeting.
It's a lot, it's a lot for staff to keep doing this every week.
We have a public hearing that we were gonna set for the 24th, so are you saying that you want to move that?
We don't, we don't have, if you set any public hearings, they were gonna be scheduled for the last meeting of the month anyway?
Which is what we would have anyway.
Oh.
I'm talking about the 24th.
Yeah, it would be the 24th.
We are scheduled right now, just so we're all clear, if anybody's listening, we're scheduled, we had a meeting last week, now we're having a meeting this week. There's another meeting scheduled, a fill-in meeting for the 10th next week.
Which is our regular meeting day, right?
Right, right, but we've kind of been conducting business for two weeks in a row, so what Dorothea's just suggesting, yeah, so what Dorothea's just suggesting is because we've already been, you know, meeting, can we just go right to the 24th, because even if we schedule the hearing, something hurt one anyway, that's all she was saying.
You really wouldn't have a loss.
I think my only question would be, would that, because we've been, it's been brought to our attention that our meetings run long, on the long side, that if we were to eliminate the 10th and go to the 24th, that things would pile up and then we'd end up with one very long meeting?
Meeting again, rather than...
Shorter, I'm just throwing it out.
I don't think so, I don't think so, because yesterday meetings are very long and I...
Getting better.
I don't want to be a pessimist, I don't think they're gonna get super better anytime soon until we make some adjustments with the agenda, we're trying to do that, but I don't think it's gonna impact in any way.
Lily, that's kind of why I thought, why don't we see how we are at the end of this meeting and see if there's like a ton of things that are...
Outstanding issues, okay.
Yeah, I just realized it's a lot of meetings in a row.
She's just throwing it out to the universe at this point, I think, so we'll be, we'll be thinking about that, how's that, okay. So, we already had the public comment and question, I was wondering if this one had come for...
No, I hope, I thought you said something, I said, "Park it," my hearing is here, I'm working on it.
Yep, you said, okay, welcome, okay.
Do you mind going ahead with minutes?
Yeah, why don't we, you know, we're here.
Go ahead and roll.
Yep, so what's the first one up, please?
June 13th.
Yeah. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I did have one on this. I believe that was the, the meeting where we approved the Nitsamown survey of the arboretum and it's not really clear to me what we were doing legally, and I think that the minutes could be improved a little bit in that regard, I think there were two motions around the arboretum, one where we applied a balancing test about whether or not to subject ourselves to review by other boards, and the other one in regards to the adopting the area as parkland based on the legal Nitsamown survey. While we did record a lot of the public comment, the DPW staff who spoke out against the dedication, it's not clear legally what we actually did, and I think that's an important point to clarify. I'd like to see the, maybe some indication, some more details about the balancing test the board applied, and also the resolution we adopted.
I'd like to make a correction on, just I want to understand, so you're saying that the DPW spoke against the dedication? I thought they were speaking about the safety and security issues at the DPW.
Sure.
I mean, I didn't see them as being in opposition to any of that.
I'm not disputing what the DP, I think it's an accurate record of what the DPW staff said, so I'm not disputing that part. My point is about the legal record that I can't really speak about.
Be happy to review it and go over it and bring it to the next meeting for the board.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, why don't we do that, so let's go on to the next set then, please?
Okay, July 11th?
Okay, any questions on these, please?
It was one typo on the first page, the very bottom, instead of, rental, it says renal.
Oh.
For taking a kidney, kidney function, thank you.
Okay, we'll make that question. We have no, no one.
Alrighty, anything else? We'll entertain a motion then, please?
I make a motion to, I read these already, motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, July 11th, as submitted, for a second?
With the one adjustment.
With the correction on the renal rental?
So submitted.
I'll second.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, special meeting minutes on July 17th. So, let's see, so I think anybody, so it would be Justin and Dave and...
So I wasn't there, did you say, do we have to put absent at all, or just, do we need to put absent in here?
We have a form to approve.
Well, but in, in the list of trustees present?
Yeah, it's right there.
Right, but doesn't it be absent, and that's okay?
Oh, to list it, should they be listed as absent?
We can, we can go both ways.
Whatever.
We can make the difference during it.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way you do it.
Okay, so we'll amend with putting an absent, okay.
So I'll make a motion to, the July 17th as amended, a second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier abstains, trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I'll see now on the other side, you have absent, very nice inference, it's clear, okay.
Okay, so we're looking at August 28th?
This was another special meeting.
Another special meeting, that's right, that's what it was, okay.
It's a very short one.
Yeah, any additional? Or is there a motion?
This is the August 28th, so this is the, just a point of clarification in regards to the motion, it reads, interestingly, because trustee Lampier had brought the motion forward, but there's a second line in regards to Mayor Plummer adding to the motion, but it not being restated by trustee Lampier, so my question is, is that how things work?
You know, normally I don't do that in work.
Oh, it was Alexandria who was...
Yeah, with the new staff doing it, they're, I'm trying to let them know things their way, actually it's just a blended motion, so I can remove the...
So why don't we...
So amended as, how do, do you want to amend it?
Let's take a look at the language when it comes forward next time.
Okay, so let's not, not approve?
Okay.
Just correct that so it's clearer, yeah, thank you, okay, so, okey doke, so, minutes are done, check in that box. Alrighty, next up, nonmunicipal, excuse me, nonmunicipal permits, first up is the Habad menorah lighting.
Okay, the board sent this back for some clarification, this is gonna function just like it has previous years, the menorah will be lit at the four corners, they have all their celebration at the library, and it's gonna be the same timeframe, I believe it started like 4:00 last year and goes through, so lighting.
So it goes, so the timing is 4:00 PM?
It goes to like 6:00 or 6:30 or something.
Yeah, I mean, so it's dark, you know, so they light it when it's dark, you know?
It's just coming soon.
We haven't heard anything from the candlelight night, which is...
Candlelight night has been meeting, they really just started getting back into the groove, I missed the last meeting, for obvious reasons, but I am in touch with them and they'll be bringing their nonmunicipal to the board, they're rather quick.
So then this looks like it's on a Sunday, this, December 10th, is that right?
Yep, that's the date they gave us.
Kind of a Bills game.
This is just a point of clarification, so on this application, you know, the, what we're in fact asking for, date request received, gave review, approved, denied, should we as a board receive, should we have a date there for the date request received?
This was received by Steve, so I didn't have the actual date and then it got skipped around, we can be better about that, we need to, we, I want to amend the form anyway because it's cookie.
And there's no times?
Right, that's one of the reasons why, it's an old form we've been using for a while, so it needs to be amended.
So we can amend that, let's, let's do that, we'll amend the form.
Yeah, I don't necessarily mind it for this application to say, because it's repeat, but one of the reasons why I bring this up is as we look at the resolution and the new code that's coming forward this meeting, where we're extending to Steve's authorization to renew and approve, an application such as this, it's relatively simple in its description. If this application were to come before us the next time again, it's relatively open-ended, there's very little specificity, and so Steve could certainly bring it forward and say there's nothing new, but we don't really have as much clarity on what is happening from a timing perspective, and so while yes, we could bring this back to the fold to the trustees, should we want more clarity at any time based on the new code that's being presented? I do have a little bit of just general concern that maybe this could be a little bit more descriptive, that we're gonna start the process of renewing automatically.
Here we go with that, so, so we're looking at the code, something separate, a form, we can amend that and bring that back to the boards and do that, you know, just making sure we're hitting all the, checking the boxes as we say.
And can we add time, you can add that on here, we have a date but not time, I think time's important.
No, no, I agree with that, that's one of the problems we have.
2:00 AM, you know?
No, I think after the board makes their adoption of, or whatever you decide to do, and it's the same with the nonmunicipals, we'll take a look at form and make it match what the necessities is.
Do we want to move this forward, or do we want to request some clarification on the time?
I just provided, 4:00 to 6:00.
4:00 to 6:00?
Yeah, yeah, we just have the time.
Thank you, sorry, I was thinking of my question, so I will make a motion to adopt this nonmunicipal use of an application with the update to the time, 4:00 to 6:00.
Actually approve, for approving.
Thank you for working on our language.
I second.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Next up.
This is true. This is their annual event, and we'll provide a letter, insurance.
And again, time would be 10:00 AM?
Yeah, I could leave this in there, description.
It runs on Saturday and it's, it's an all day, they usually end by 5:00.
Do they go by 4:00 or do they go into the evening? I thought they go into the evening, because don't they put up tents up there or anything?
That might be, with the, that's...
Paddle and pour.
Paddle and pour.
Okay.
So it's too tied together.
This is just around...
From 10:00 to 5:00, are we saying?
Roughly, yeah, yeah. Actually it starts before, it usually starts at 8:00, they get the first, the first crews out. It's an all-day event, and it's a regional event.
And they set up in Shane's Alley with the tents and so forth, like before or not?
No, this, this is not like paddle and pour or anything else, so this is strictly the crews coming from the region, and so they stage it right out of our DPW, and they put in the temporary docks down there, right? Okay, so there's just spectators along the canal, but the one thing that has always come up, and we need to make sure again, is traffic, trash collection.
That's the point I was gonna make.
They don't have, yeah, the tents, the tents that they had have usually been down by the, by the DPW, you know, we need, let me just see if there's anything...
Sometimes they would be like, they would have t-shirts.
Oh no, I know, they have the merch, but I don't know that they have it for this one.
I saw at the Hyrris Moon Festival that they had provided, as part of the festival, a cardboard type of trash receptacle that they brought with them and set up inside the event.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that they took care of their own trash removal, I really, you know, I don't know if they can do it this year, I would, I would recommend that we request that going forward because...
I like that.
An issue has been trash, because our DPW is not working on Saturdays, and sometimes the trash sits there overflowing over the weekend, and if it rains, then it's a really...
I know that the candlelight crew is looking at that as part of their thing, they, I think they had them last year and they are looking to add more in the festival as well, because they're, you know, they have some ongoing, with the trash from the events.
That would be my only amendment to that, to our motion to approve, is that we obtain additional information regarding how they would deal with the trash.
Yeah, I would agree.
Just a, a quick note, we should carry that over to the discussion as well about delegating this administratively, if we want to be more specific about who's responsible for the trash, the trash pickup, as a non-discretionary part of the administrative review.
It's also going on the form. Okay, so there's a motion with the...
This will require a 45-day waiver.
Oh, that's right, okay, with a 40, so, had you made the motion, Dave, had you, had you already made the motion?
I have made a motion.
Okay, you want to jump in?
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the nonmunicipal use permit from Pittsford Crew for November 6th, called a Poggiata.
Fourth.
With...
November 4th, sorry?
November 4th.
Oh, I'm looking at the...
There's an inaccurate date on the letter.
This is what it says in the letter.
We're all known for that.
Well, let's see.
Okay, let's go check you guys.
Let's check the calendar.
Here we are, good catch.
November 5th is the...
Is Saturday the 11th?
No, November 5th is, is...
It says Saturday.
The 6th, or a Sunday.
No, but it says, but I'm just saying, that's what it says in the letter.
The application...
Should be the 4th.
Should be the 4th.
Fourth is correct.
Right, so we've got two different dates, it's the 4th on the application, right. So the application's correct in terms of the date.
So the court is wrong on November 6th, so, okay. All right, November 4th?
Okay. With the condition that the village receives verification of a trash removal plan. And that could be coordinated with our DPW now, so...
And to waive, leaving it 45 days.
Yes, and, and also to waive the 45-day requirement.
Got it. I have it.
I have that, then, okay, good, okay, so we've, we've, you've got it, okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, roll call please.
Just discussion.
Discussion, sure.
The letter does reflect that some of the crews will be, coming in on Friday, November 3rd, I expect, or would expect, the temporary docks to be installed by then for them to use. While the permit only says November 4th, might we want to modify it to be Friday, November 3rd for participating crews and November 4th for the event, I don't know, I mean, it says 200 to 300 rowers, that's a lot of rowers.
On Saturday?
No, on Friday, it says.
They say some, some.
Lastly, we anticipate the participating crew teams will arrive sometime on Friday, November 3rd, and may want to practice on the canal that afternoon, so...
Okay, so what would you like to have?
I'm just...
I don't see, I think it's more for, I get where you're going, a lot of participants, but I think it's for people attending in the actual event itself, this, they could come and practice at any time, anyway.
At any time, there's no...
Yeah, they have access to the town.
Yeah, they're not, you can't limit, right?
You're worried about setting up temporary docking?
I'm just, I'm just asking with the temporary docking and whatever they may be staging on Friday night, is that just kind of part of the overall?
It has been, you know, just traditionally, and I think, you know, the practicing or whatever, isn't part of the event, I mean, in other words, I think they're looking for the permit for the specifics of the event, am I correct?
Okay, that's fine by me, as long as I read...
So we all understand, okay.
All right, roll call?
I'll second, oh, sorry, I didn't second.
This is the segment, so, roll call please?
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okey doke.
Mayor, before we move on, can I just ask a question about this, because this might be a concern with this event, a resident asked me at the Bills game this past weekend if there is open parking behind the flower mill, you know, the big parking lot behind there?
Right, that's a private lot.
That's what I thought, but they were saying that people are parking back there and is that, I mean, it has nothing, I said, it has nothing to do with us, because we don't own it, it's privately owned and correct, and I wasn't sure if there's signage back there that says, you know, cannot park.
That signage would be from the owners.
Yeah, so I don't know, does anybody know?
We need no control over that lot.
Right, does anybody know if there's signs up there or if people...
I think we'd have to look, it's not something that would be present in my...
There are signs.
I would think that there would be, it's a private law.
Okay, there you go, because that might be, you know, something that happens on Saturday, all those people are parking.
That would be something that a potential future NIS claims from the applicant, we need to contact the private owner of the building.
Right, if they want to park us there.
And then as part of that, that can maybe move forward as parking available, if the concern that we had was that there wasn't enough parking space, and put it, put it back onto them to go find it, that might be a resource for them, but I don't know the owner nor one that has...
We could just request a parking plan.
Yeah, and whether or not they go to a, a private landowner or not.
Up to them.
And can I ask, is Steve and Zach coming tonight?
Nope. This wouldn't be their normal meeting night.
That would.
Nope.
It was delayed one week.
This was, this is the delay meeting pack from last week, which they don't participate in the second meeting.
They, they, one meeting a month.
Oh, one meeting a month, I know, okay, I didn't know that, all right.
Okay, we're set on this, all right, next up, the Frog House event on October 8th.
If the board considers approval, this will require a 45-day waiver.
Yeah, we did receive a letter, as I recall, for the last event, I can't remember whether it came before the event or after, and a resident on State Street, it might have even been two residents on State Street, commented regarding the parking, because there was, I don't know if it was overflow parking, but there was definitely parking on, happening on State Street on both sides. Well, in theory, I don't object to the parking on State Street because it slows the traffic, I don't think it's post, I don't think it's permitted, I don't think we ever...
It is, got that straight, got that it, whether State Street permitted parking?
Steve said it's permitted.
Yeah. It's permitted?
Yes.
I remember having the conversation, I didn't remember the result. He, he had looked into it. Okay, good, so it is permitted, but on one side or both sides?
He said it was both sides.
Okay.
Well, in the application, they specifically write parking location, public parking can be identified at, and they gave the town Pittsford parking, so it's really a responsibility of the person who's parking there to take a look at the parking codes in the village, right?
And they've been, Steve's been in touch with them, maybe they're aware.
I think, I think they've been encouraged to park in municipal lots around the state street, because of such congestion type stuff.
Yes, okay.
Okay, honey?
I have just a general comment, and this, I think in that same letter, maybe from a different resident, I had a question about use and for-profit, non-profit versus a private party, and the question that I have is as a residential district, the degree by which organizations, nonprofits or for-profits have a right to gather for purposes of that organization on private land or residential, residential location. In this particular instance, given the sort of permanency of the Frog House in the back, I just wanted to bring that forward and ask for clarity, how that operates and what our code suggests. They can't sell. They can't sell, okay. There's no prohibition against gathering, good.
So they can ask for donation, correct? They can't, they can't charge admission?
Right, there cannot, there cannot be a retail...
They can't sell merchandise, am I correct, as I recall?
Anything that, that feels like retail, they can't do that. Anything that feels like, it's a donation for something else, it's that, it's a gathering only. Yeah. Okay, great. They'll take a $5 donation for that calendar, that's a retail sale. Retail, regardless of whether or not it's for-profit, nonprofit.
I wouldn't think, I mean, well, no, the profit or nonprofit doesn't make a difference.
Right, okay.
Wait, wait, clarify that, I'm sorry, you said if they take $5 donation for a calendar, that's considered retail?
That's a, that's a sale, I don't know.
Wow, donation or price?
Well, if they're getting something in exchange for their money, that's retail.
But I thought donation is, you don't have to give it if you don't want to.
Well.
Technically, they should be able to be able to give you the calendar, whether you donate $5 or not, because donation means.
So it's, it's the exchange of value, whether or not it's for charity or not. And so what I think is important in this particular instance, again, in particular, if, as we move forward with this, right, or granting to Steve the opportunity, or the building inspector, enforcement officer, the opportunity to continue to have events such as this, we want to be particularly careful with regards to the events and, and how we move forward. In addition, there is a degree, I would think, of precedent, uh, that's important to just bring clarity to. So I think as we move forward with an approval like this, we just want to have, I think, a statement in the motion that it would refrain, there'd be a refrain of any retail use.
I believe the letter you're talking about had also an indication there were signs for marketing.
Oh.
I don't know, I don't know if that was verified by anybody, I'm sure it wasn't verified by anybody connected to the village, because we weren't working on somebody, but that was an allegation from the neighbor that there were signs for various institutions.
Clarify that with regards to retail use or residential use.
I would, I would say that's not a permitted use to be advertising a business.
Whether or not it's, uh.
Now, there's going to be a, a line where, I'm sorry, there's going to be a line where it intersects with speech. So.
Or education.
Probably speech.
Because I know that there's a, a stable signage on the canal for the Frog House that stays there all the time, with information about the Frog House and probably their website, and so is that considered marketing?
Probably.
Well, that's on Canal Corp property? This is right out on the path, right?
If it's, yeah, on a bridge, it is.
Outside of jurisdiction.
Was it?
It's on Canal Corp's.
It might be on, on, on their property, other private property, doesn't it?
Canal Corp owns in, what is it, 15, 15 feet on the path.
That's true, I mean, I think every area is different.
Yeah, that's true, it might be different in the residential line of it.
I mean, I mean, every area.
I know, you're right, you're right, because it's all existing and non-conforming. Yeah, I mean, we have to, we can look it up, Steve can look it up, we just didn't see the property.
I would say the use is tiptoeing on the edge of being non-conforming with that.
And that's of concern to us, because residents have been complaining about it, so we, we need to really talk about this.
It's at least been expressed, and I don't know what the answer is.
Right.
Um, and I think, you know, with.
Well, that's, that, I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted you again.
I was just saying, with regards to this application, there's nothing here that would suggest in any way that there's anything, uh, inappropriate with regards to either marketing or retail. Right, it is pretty clearly an event for people to gather to support the Frog House. I just want to be thoughtful to the comments that we received, to ensure that maybe as we approve an application like this, we just reiterate the non-retail, non-marketing use of a residential gathering as part of that approval.
We can make that a condition on approval.
Right, because it's already code, and to Jeff's comment, it's already code, it's already here. Um, we want to be sure that the organizers of events have an understanding of what the current code permits, regardless of whether or not, you know, our support and love of the Frog House is, you know, very high. Um, it's just.
We're proud Frog.
Yeah, we're cool Frog here. Um, and it's a great organization run, you know, by great people, and it's nice to see the gatherings here in the community. I just want to make sure that there's an awareness of that line, that Steve has the authority to review and consider as this event occurs.
Jeff?
I was suggest, I was going to suggest that the board really needs to get a report from Steve on this. I'm, I'm, you know, I can sort of speak to it, but Steve is the end-all, the-oh of that kind of determination.
So why don't we, as an action item, we'll get with Steve tomorrow, and he will, uh, reach out to the board members with his determinations. Does that, does that make sense?
Could be difficult, because this is October 8th.
Right, can we do that, it's October 8th, the event. Can we do this, can we approve this on condition that there'll be no sale, no retail sales and no direct marketing?
An easier way to do it would be that it aligns with the zoning permit in the area.
Okay, so just simply restate the, the, the condition that it must, the use for this event must align with the aligned zoning in the district.
Which is what Steve has already suggested.
And doing it that way, it would give Steve the opportunity to see if it does comply under, see if it doesn't.
That's the condition.
Yeah, at least looking at the condition.
We're clear on that?
Yep.
Okay. Willie, yeah?
I had, uh, one more, and I, I don't know that the one, as an addendum here, but I think it's probably, I don't want to forget when we've talked, when we began the discussion regarding, uh, the non-municipal, uh, use permits are being reviewed by the, um, building inspector for recurring, um, events. And that is, do we want to think about or talk about, uh, the number of events any particular, uh, group might hold? Let's say, he's now, now we've given Steve the power, uh, to review non-municipal use permits, are we also giving guidance regarding if there's a monthly, uh, request for a non-municipal use permit from the same entity? Do we want to work that, talk about that and work that in as well? I just have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that's a great point, I, I think a lot of these points are great, um, about clarifying what can be done in these different districts, and I, I think in this regard, it's probably related to the, um, home-based occupation and, and what's allowed, uh, under those terms as well. And I, I think that as we're considering delegating this administratively, we have to make sure the code is more clear about these kinds of concerns.
Yeah, did you have, oh, Jeff?
Home-based occupations are pretty clearly, if you don't know they're there, they're okay. And so this is, this wouldn't be, oh, but you would have to, probably have to change the non-municipal permit code if you were going to put a limit on it, name the limit.
Because I think right now the Frog House has events four times a year.
I mean, there's nothing in, in our, um, new code that would address frequency.
We can clarify that.
Which is important if you're in a residential area, you know?
Yeah, to the comment on frequency, every application that would come before us, we as a board could always interject Steve's authority and bring it back to the board. So if there were to be a concern from a resident, we'd be always be able to bring it back and review it and address frequency that way, rather than assuming a certain set of frequency has persistency just because we've extended it to it.
But addressing frequency, there's nothing in our code.
Yeah, I would really think it ought to be in the code.
Yeah, it's not codified, that's the only thing. It could be deemed as arbitrary, perhaps.
Never really been a concern, as long as I've been, for whatever reason.
But it's a good point.
It's never come up, but it certainly could, I mean, if the board feels that way about it.
These applications are, at least this one is time and place, right? And every one would be time and place, right? Unless they submitted a application for something with persistency, right? So could we?
Well, well, time and, it's, so it'll be time and place, and you, and the, the current proposal to move this along to Steve is that the application has to be the same, so you would have had to prove it once, right?
Oh, the date.
Right, right, well, you know, the general timeframe.
The type of event.
Just this application that are coming before us, yeah, so first.
And it's moving one day to, to April, or whatever day, October, whatever day next year, that's just one day off, because the years are moving that way, right? But that's the same application, but if they come in for January 15th or whatever, and they've never done it before, then Steve should move that to February.
Good, no questions.
Okay. So where are we with, devil, motion, I think, I think that one is. Oh, okay.
Our board reform, Mayor, 28 years, um, disappointment, a couple of points.
Address, please.
Seven points, Mayor. Uh, just a nominee, just so you all know, the Frog House sign is actually on the Frog House, the Quincy Daskerans residential property. That lot actually extends further to the canal, so the actual property line includes all the gardens, and actually the edge of the towpath is the actual property line. The other point I wanted to make is, several years ago, we had a discussion, because it was a Supreme Court that deemed not-for-profit signs, political signs, free speech, limiting the regulation that municipality could do, and we had considerable discussion about that when Steinman's updated our zoning code, and so not-for-profit, non-commercial signs, but not-for-profit signs were deemed permissible. And there's been, since that time, wide use of them around the village for things like the Saints Place sale and so forth, of people putting similar signs in their yard. Some of them are fundraiser fundraising, some of them are to just publicize a not-for-profit, it's an event. But I just wanted to remind you all of that consistency, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, and, and also the, um, the signs, for example, for St. Louis sale, that's not a residence, you know, in other words, I think we're talking about this with a little bit of a different context.
But, but there are people that put it in their residential yards that publicize the sale, but not talking about ones that.
Right, understood, understood, thanks so much.
I believe the resident complaint was not about the not-for-profit signs, but other signs.
I remember that now, it was businesses that had donated or who somehow contributed to the event, and their signs.
Sponsorship, sponsorship signs.
Sponsorship.
So.
You got it, gotcha.
So.
There's still a free speech issue.
There is, right. Okay.
Yeah, because a duck drop hits sponsorship signs out.
So I think, in this case, we'll just make a motion to approve as presented, waiving the 45-day, um, notification requirement, and simply adding the comment that, um, it will be according to, as all permits are, the zoning code currently in the village as adjudicated by the code enforcement officer. So basically, it's what everybody expects.
So I'm making a motion to approve the Frog House application as submitted, uh, with an understanding that it must align with district zoning. Do I have a second?
And a 45-day.
And a 45-day waive.
I'll second that.
Okay, Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Coe. Uh, Trustee Lanier.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer. Motion passes.
Okay. All these will be proven. All righty, next up, uh, the authorization for the mayor to sign the amended canal permit. So you received those emails? Scott?
We did. Yeah, I, I had a group comment about this.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so I, I appreciate that we're going to the Canal Corporation for approval for a lot of the important uses in, in that area, including some that we're already using, such as the parking lot. And it's, it's certainly time to be having those discussions. At the same time, I, I think it's very important to recognize that, uh, we, we have several guiding documents for the, the village board, including the LWRP, the comp plan, the active transportation plan, that specifically called for us to, um, facilitate and enhance use of the waterways that we have, including connections to trails like the Canal Trail. And I think that there's been a, a very reasonable proposal to, uh, have a trail that would go around the, um, the eastern side of the, the DPW building. I think that's great, that actually echoes a, a proposal, or is very similar to a proposal that's found in the active transportation plan, uh, as a trail. The, the problem that I see with that, um, I, I think we should still pursue that idea, just to, to be clear, and I, I think it could be a very nice, successful way to get into the, uh, the arboretum. The problem is that it does not directly connect park space to the Canal Trail, uh, which is what we're called for to, uh, which is what we're called to do in a lot of these important guiding documents. So, uh, specifically what it does is that it connects the arboretum to the DPW land, to the Canal Trail. And, and that's great, um, but I think that we can do better, uh, because we already have a proposed trail that goes from the, uh, the Canal Trail, um, up to the arboretum, which is then connected to the, uh, the Auburn Line Trail. So I know that that trail has some, uh, some difficulties that need to be worked out, including some of the, the grading. But I, I do believe that we should pursue that to make sure that the permit includes the, um, uh, the pertinent pieces that were called to do by the, the guiding documents to the village.
Any other comments?
Yeah, um, sorry, I was trying to pull up the, you know, so I think, and just in your comment, we had, um, at one point, when we initially. When we created the park, right, when we made that official, dedicated the park, dedicated that land park plan, there was a short time after that, that we had created a map, a GPS map. Um, I think you had presented it one evening, uh, and that was before the Friends of the Arboretum had brought forward the idea of walking out there and trying to mark a trail that made sense. And, you know, the trail has its challenges, and I think we all know that. And one of the reasons why I had looked into the liability that the village had, there were people out there that we authorized to work on that trail, was what if somebody slips? Right, while working on it, we know that trail's not perfect. It does a butt, uh, the current DPW, which I think we might mention, and, you know, and have a conversation about that a little bit later today. But, so the comment of how do we get in there, currently the only way to get in there may be through that land. It's not a perfect trail, it probably would never be, um, easily accessible by at all, right? Uh, it would be a woodland trail, uh, there are a number of woodland trails in the community. You know, I think about Abraham Lincoln Park and Webster, the, that's not a trail for everybody, right? Uh, but you can get in there, and you can, you can experience the park of Abraham Lincoln Park, not all of Webster. And it's frankly, there's times that I've been out there with my kids, where it's, you know, quote-unquote, dangerous to a degree. I mean, you're coming down slopes that are pretty aggressive, there's paths through places that there probably shouldn't be paths, you places. In the long run, where this trail may be, may not be optimal, right? There may be better things to do to access the parkland than this trail. But to have the money to do it, to dedicate it, to work through the long-term plan, the long-term, uh, capital plan, yeah, these may require a lot more effort than what we can put in the next one, two, or three years. And I think, as difficult as that trail is, it would be nice for the Canal Corps to allow for residents, if they want to create a walkable path, that we can have a little warning sign on this trail isn't for everybody, right? It'd be nice to know that we can proceed with something in that immediate sort of 10 to 15 yards, um, from the west side of that. And when I read through our engineer's, uh, email to the Canal Corps, um, the question was asked, uh, something the effect of, hey, is the new trail in this area? Or something to that effect. And Scott's response is, I think this is in addition to the amended permit for the trail or accessway yet to be determined in location, width, and other specifics, but wanted to be included in the effort. Well, location, width, and other specifics, I mean, that's a remarkably open-ended request from the Canal Corps. If I was the Canal Corps, I would look at that and say, no way. But if we did request of the Canal Corps for a permeable natural surface with no significant, um, alterations to the natural landscape or topography in the immediate 10 to 15 yards on the western section of that land, I think a more reasonable question would get us to the point where if we want the option to access the park through that spot, we have it. And I, I recognize that we could defer this and delay it, I don't think we need to. If, to me, the fear is very reasonable in the conversation that Kevin Cairns has had, uh, with, uh, Scott Marter, that if we just amend our questions, we'll get a different result. And so I'd like to see that included in the permit.
Also, in addition, I mean, it's already in the permit, um, to have that access on the eastern side with the proposed path already, that we could just go ahead and do, and DPW could do it, minimal amount of expenditure, signage right there, you know, directing people appropriately and safely past the DPW. I just want to make that clear.
I think we do both.
You know, so.
I think we have both, I think it's very reasonable to have both. This basically creates an option, and, and at the end of the day, too, um, this permit, for as much as we are discussing it, is revocable in what, 30 days, not even, I mean, this is.
It always is, I mean, that's the canal.
So, let's just see if they let us put in a dirt path in the 10 yards to the left that follows the, the path. And if sometime down the road, the Boy Scouts, FOA decides to make it navigable for some people, not all, incredibly, that's okay, to me.
So, okay, so, I, I'm just trying to understand, would the intention be still, I mean, because now there were a couple directives that came out of the last meetings, okay? So one of the directives was to go back to Canal Corp and say, we want a path somewhere along the canal path to be determined. So what you're seeing now in those letters is the response, not helpful, we can't do it, we need more specifics, we're going to need seeker, you know, these are the things that we will need to do that. So now you're saying, let's define it right where that path is, even though there's issues. No, I just really want to understand this, because I really think we need to have a fully vetted discussion on this. So, we go back to them saying, this is where the path's going to be. Yes, I see your hand, I'm still speaking, thank you so much. So, now we've had meetings, we've had meetings with FOA about what can be done, just in the immediacy, it's already in the permit, to have the path that the DPW can do on land that's already disturbed. In other words, we're not impacting habitats or anything else, it's already there. We can at least make that happen, get that signage up, and make sure people have that connection safely, okay? So you're just saying, in the future, we can still go through there on the other side now?
I think.
And, and that's what's going to hold up the permit and the scout project and everything else, okay? Until we get that, that's, I just want to make sure that we all understand that, and that's on the record, that that's, that's the direction we're going. Am I clear on that?
I understand.
I just want to understand it.
I understand your comment.
Well, I'd like to be a little more clear on that, because I, I heard that the, um, the scouts were already doing their projects. So are they already building a project before the permit is signed?
They could be, I don't know, I don't have that, that exact information, I haven't been down there, I don't know.
They don't know if they're.
I know they're on a deadline, I mean.
They're supermits.
Yeah.
Originally, I didn't think that they were going to be on our permit, I thought they were going to approach the Canal Corporation independently, too.
Jeff, can you?
Supermits, um, one allowing the installation of gardens, the, the second allowing us to maintain them. So this is a.
And that's the connection.
Scott's put it in, and then they're done.
Yeah.
Situation.
So we just can't maintain it until we get our permit in place? That's fine, I think that's not a big deal, I mean, we don't have to maintain it yet until it's built, right?
We don't have approvals.
This is going to take a week to get done.
Okay, so what, what action item do you want for, you know, Scott's? Okay, so what action item do you want for, you know, Scott's now working on this with, with the Canal Corps? What action, what directive would you like to give our village engineer rooms? So we're all clear?
I'd like to hear from the.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
President of Friends of the Arboretum. Unfortunately, the day the emergency meeting was held, it was the first day I was on vacation in Europe, so I was unable to attend that meeting. But I do have some additional information that I'd like to provide to you. You know, our intent with the Friends, and we follow the directive of permission that you've granted us, was to blaze through tracks. In doing that, we realized that this was just a blazing. And when we explored the most feasible route, we did it as we've done with every project. We've done research to back up a sound decision. We realized that there were issues in terms of topography, and the trail was not ready, which is why we made it invisible from the towpath. Except for the one blaze, we didn't clear anything from the other end, so nobody could find the trail unless we were looking for it. The intent of the trail, and I just wanted to state, you know, the mission, the core mission of the Arboretum, among the other goals, is to enhance the public's ability to enjoy and enjoy the property. The towpath trail opens up areas of the property that were not accessible before, providing use of wetlands to the west, and it provides a really nice public entrance on the towpath, which is different from the experience of walking around the DPW. We love what Zach proposed, and we think this is an additive process. Both, the more access we have, the more the public benefits. Couple things you may not know. I had also talked to an equipment operator who had looked at the berm to give us an idea of what work would be required there to actually level out that area and make the top of the berm wide enough so it wasn't a safety issue. And his suggestion was that you could come in from the yard with either a bobcat or a backhoe. And after you trimmed off the small secondary brush that's growing on the top there, you could level the top of that berm to about 10 feet wide. And there's a couple other areas of debris piles on the south side that could also easily be leveled from access from the yard. Then the wetland side could be planted with stuff that would create a barrier that would be safer than Lucian Warren Park or Marine Trail and Minnabon's Park or Pother Mill or any of the other places. And you could also either put in a fence or appropriate vegetation so there's a barrier dispersing anyone from going to the yard. But we don't want to collude this, because really, to have a public entrance to the Arboretum on the towpath trail is a huge public benefit for the project. It gives it visibility, and it creates connections. The other thing, last week, when I had the former director of New York Parks and Trail and the mastermind behind the Jemessy-Delley Greenway, Fran Gachek, walked through the Arboretum with me. And although we did not walk the berm, because it was posted, we could see it. And I explained the situation. And in talking through many issues with her, her suggestion was that any trail where there's a potential safety issue, you sign it. Because we can't flatten the world and make everything flat and perfectly smooth like a concrete sidewalk. So you give people the choice. She's had tremendous experience working with handicapped, accessible people. But rather than impose standards on what they've done on the Jemessy-Greenway and other projects that New York Parks and Trails has worked on, is to have outreach and ask people, you know, what can you do? And the general response that she's gotten through her career has been, don't tell us what to do, let us choose. And that's why appropriate signage, saying, this is not a multi-use trail. There may be some steep slopes here, so you do that at the entrance. And that's how you deal with a situation with a steep slope that would be on the west side of this trail. But I think this may be a longer-range project, because there is some earth movement that should be involved. But I support what Dave Marshall and Justin Lightyear proposed, because it's the best, the best move, and we shouldn't rule out long-range plans that make the most sense. So thank you very much.
Can I, oh, Justin?
Yep, and then I have some.
Okay, so I was able to walk with Steve, and I was able to walk on the berm. And I have a couple questions.
Sure.
When I was talking with Steve, he said that there may be some other ideas that are very close to that, that might be a little safer and a little less labor-intensive. So when we talked about getting, you know, some bobcats in there and making the trail 10 feet wide, who pays for that? And is that something that the village, you want your ass in the village to do?
Well, we're not asking the village to do this now. We're just asking you. We want to do more research on it, to be honest with you. And we don't think it's something that's urgent to do right now. But we don't want to rule out, because we think in the long run, that is the best entrance from the towpath into the Arboretum. And, you know, we have looked at other options, and we can discuss them. I don't want to take the time in the meeting right now. But we have looked at some other options, and we can talk about them down the road. I think at this point, we just don't want to rule out the possibility of developing a trail that makes a lot of sense.
And yeah, I think that's a good point about talking about other options, because I think this really is a community sort of project, to bring us back to our community, about what does this really look like, you know, so everybody in our community can weigh in. And, you know, you write that cost is obviously a factor. You did mention that you had done some research about the trail, so that would be helpful if you could provide that to the board. That would be one.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, hang on, just let me, just let me finish one sec. Thank you so much. Also, you mentioned that there was an equipment operator that you spoke with. If you can let, let us know, maybe just let Zach know, so he can follow up on that, you know? Because the DPW certainly has ideas. That would be really helpful, because it sounds like you've been doing a lot of front-end work on this. So I think it would help us out on the village side here. Let's see, the other thing is, and again, and I think it goes to, you know, the idea of having a larger dialogue and looking at the future, as you're saying, with the entire community, because it is, you know, a wildlife preserve in addition to an arboretum. And so I'm thinking, and I've had discussions actually with other folks that work with parks and work, you know, in conservation, that what has actually become quite unique, when the town went in on their side to put in the Erie Canal, you know, their Erie Canal Preserve, you know, they put in very wide, highly accessible paths. And the people I was speaking with, they said, well, what it did, it shifted habitat to the woodlands between, and wetlands, it tightened it between where our, our land is and where the town, town land is. So there's been an impact on habitat. And so the wildlife sanctuary component, we all love, you know? So I think maybe that merits a little more additional study, because it's, there's wetlands, it goes down through wetlands on one side. We have the impact from what the town did, knowing, you know, they knew that that's what was going to happen. And I think, you know, again, this is all part of this process in the future. What does that look like? And what, how do we define a wildlife sanctuary? Is that something that we put a path through? Do we say that is all habitat to the, for the wildlife? I mean, those are the questions, I think, that are a little bit larger. We're not going to answer tonight. You know, because it's great you're doing all the research, and I thank you for that. And if you could, just send it to Joy Diaz, something we share with the board.
Can we go back to what we're, hold on one second, Bobby. I just want to go back, I want to go back to what we're actually charged with right now. Because it sounds like what we're, what we're charged with is not really going to be absolutely not, we can't use that trail, right? It's just, right? I mean, I guess I need clarification, what we're, what, what's the concern about the permit that's in front of us?
Well, so we haven't expanded, when was the last time that we expanded this permit?
The permit was never signed.
So we've been operating.
The permit was made available, it was sent, sent to the village in, I believe it was 2012, and was never signed. There was never any action taken on it.
Right.
So here we are now. We certainly need to have one, because as we all say, there's been usage. You know, we know where we are with this. So regardless of any trails, for that matter, we simply need the permit on the land. And as Kevin said to Scott, he said, you can amend this at any point in time, you know? This is interactive. The Canal Corps gears these things to a positive outcome. You know, they're excited to have things activated. They want this on the canal. I mean, this isn't a negative circumstance at all. This is a good thing. We just want to make sure we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed.
Let me just ask you, if this permit went through tonight, Justin, what is your concern?
My concern is that we've been operating for several decades on the Canal Corporation property. We have a parking lot for the DPW there. The berm that we're talking about, I believe, was actually originally the product of the DPW leveling out their own lot and pushing it up into this berm. So we're not talking about new pristine territory here. We're talking about making things legally proper with the Canal Corporation for the first time in several decades. And as, as we're doing this, I would like to make sure that we're accounting for the uses that we are already considering in our comprehensive plan, in documents like the LWRP, and that we're not foreclosing possibilities of things that, you know, a trail that we've already glazed.
So if, let me understand this, though. So by, if the permit's in front of us, and we can at least start with this and get things going, why would it foreclose or even omit any other possibilities? That's the piece I'm missing, I guess. I just don't understand it, you know?
I guess my comment here is, there's no expediency to this. We'll get it done in a week. This is an incredibly short process to get done. Kevin is incredibly quick to respond, based on what I see here with Scott. And we can easily clarify a permeable natural trail option on the west side. And just to further comment, if we sign this permit, it has to go through New York State, Canal Corps, and all the different iterations of how it eventually gets to where, eventually resides in some sort. And then for us, a week later, two weeks later, to come back and say, by the way, that permit we just put on file with you guys, we're amending it. And then you have a new number and a new process, and everybody has to go through again. I don't know the fast way to piss off people, but it's asking them to do operative things over and over, but we can just get it done the right way the first time. So to some of the comments here this evening, reserving the right to put the trail in as a potential future use, it may not, frankly, I don't even think it's the perfect long-term solution.
It's got to come to us anyways, right?
Oh, we, yeah, it's, it's our land, it is what we would.
Okay.
So it may not be a perfect solution long-term, but we have a lot of things to spend money on. And as much as we would love to get out there and spend money, that's going to, if we're going to spend money out there, that's part of a larger site plan discussion, or that's part of a larger discussion. When do we get to that? Is it two years? Is it four years? Is it six? Are we getting county money? Are we getting state money to help? I mean, how is this accelerating? We got a DPW sitting there on that land. So maybe there's something bigger to talk about here that involves one thing bigger. But until we get to that point, if we have residents and Boy Scouts and people who are willing to create a connection to the towpath, to get people in there that is away from the DPW, let's just put in a department the first time.
I appreciate the comment. Lisa, I wanted to ask you, too, you mentioned that Steve has said that you have some other possibilities in the same area of trails. Did you follow up with any of those or make any concrete suggestions?
I was going to talk, didn't you guys have a meeting with Steve, and you had lots of other options?
Yeah, the, the other options were access from the canal. There were three options that were discussed with Steve for access in other places. The best option was the path that would spread around the existing acreage on the east side of the garage, cross Village Lane just north of the north Village and DPW driveway, and follow these just to ramp up into that. That was the consensus of the best options. There was also suggested of closing that entrance off and making people go around the back of the green shed, which is difficult for many reasons and would not solve the problem of, and everybody agreed, people are trying to cut for shortcuts, because that's not a direct route. There was another suggestion to take, to construct a new trail from the end of Ted Spall's parking lot and connect it to the Auburn Trail. But again, we would lose an entrance to the, to the Arboretum, and we wouldn't really a short direct route from the canal for pedestrians.
So I'm hearing there was three options, and there was one that you liked.
Well, the one I mentioned. But the Friends have also done other investigation, other options. We looked at the possibility of going along the base of the berm, the base to the wetlands. I talked to Bill Smith about that. There's also the possibility, if you put a fence up, you could go on the.
So there's lots of options, is what you're saying.
There's also options. The other thing I wanted to say is, the Friends are a 115-member organization of people in this community that have an interest in the Arboretum and are, they join our organization because we care about this passionately, one other point. And that is, one of the reasons we're offering to do a guided walk for all of you, because what's so unique, and Fran Gachek noticed this immediately, is that the Arboretum is a treasure, because it has a variety of micro ecosystems present. And really, the development that we do is dictated by the species of flora that are appropriate for each of these microsystems. You know, there's a riparian corridor, wetland, hardwoods, and just.
I don't mean to cut you off, but we just really, I do want to just go back here.
I kind of need to say a word.
Singing to the choir, I'm all for the arboretum. I'm just trying to figure out why. We can't wait for a week to just put a thing in there. I mean, I'm fine with that, but I think that we need to move forward.
Yeah, let's bring this back to the board.
Yeah, I think if we can't get it.
Let's bring this back. Okay, so we've had our discussion. Is there a motion?
Actually, I still got another, I wanted to see the comment on this, too. You know, we've, we've said that there are different options here. But really, we're talking about a strip of land that's, what, maybe 100 feet wide or something? And on the east, you got the DPW, and right in the west, you get a wetland. We have one trail that's marked out that kind of goes down the middle of this. Maybe you're going 10 feet to the left or something, but this is kind of what we're working with. All the other options that were discussed do not connect park to the trail.
I think some people are.
Our plan, the LWRP, says we want to connect the park to the trail. And those don't do it. And he also happens crossing a road.
Yeah, I, it's hard for me to really, you know, this is all speculative, because I need to see. I need to see things, but if we're talking about just amending the current permit so that it gives us options to do something in the future, I'm fine with that. But it's going to come back to us anyways for any specifics, so.
Okay, so let's, let's keep it with the board, because I want to get a motion out of this, so we can move forward. We spent quite a bit of time on this. We have a big agenda, and we need to keep things moving.
What I'd like to do, then, is talk to, from what I can see, the communication from Scott Harder was that we don't know where the trail is going to be, we don't know what it's going to look like, we don't know what the surface is going to be, or when it's going to be built.
Because that was the directive from the last meeting.
And I think we can do better than that, based on what we have with the trail map that we have in front of us, with our understanding of the land, and what the current proposal is. So we're looking at a trail that is between, I think, 6 and 10 feet wide is a very, very safe assumption. We're looking at permeable surface, dirt and/or mulch. And we're looking at essentially very close to the line that's already been geoplotted on a map.
Gotcha. I see where you're going with this. So rather than even have a motion at this point, why don't we have a directive to take this back to our engineer? Can you craft language, send it back to the board? Jeff, I want you to take a look at that as well, because we want to make sure we're getting the dotting i's, crossing t's. I can, you know, this is where I'm seeing the directions going. Am I correct?
I want.
And then, and then it comes back, it's all tied up.
I want the least specific language necessary that might permit permeable nature trail that connects to that land. Whether or not we use it, who does it, if they're not a cost of money.
Okay, understood. Just, just so we can kind of keep it moving here. Does that make sense? So you can put, because I mean, you're already using the language that depends the most of this. That's the stuff that's going to need, okay?
The more specificity we add, we'll aid its effectiveness.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't see, those are exactly the things that were mentioned in the email from the Canal Corps. I think that we've got a good idea about those. I haven't heard much dispute about how that's going to change. And I think if we give that to them, they might be pretty happy. They might ask for seeker. And I think that based on the fact that this is, you know, what I just said, a permeable surface, maybe a little bit of grading with a bobcat on a dirt pile that we made.
I know, we, we got it.
Good, good, moving on.
I think, I think we were all trying to, thanks so much. So we're going to circle back with you, Justin, and Scott, and we're going to move this forward. Okay, thanks, everybody.
You just help for the minutes. It's, Justin is taking care of this.
That's the action item, to reach out with Scott.
May I, I have a couple very.
Very quickly, before we move on, Merrick, but thank you.
We would like to request one more mowing of the meadow this season. It's only been mowed once this year, and that would help hunt down on the weeds. As you know, we finished mulching and edging the new spruce trail over the weekend. The town of Pittsburgh has agreed to deliver wood chips that we will scramble over that trail. But we want permission to do that, and hopefully, if the DPW could kindly arrange, allow the gate to be opened so the town could deliver the wood chips, and that needs to be done by Friday the 3rd. Because we have scouts that may do that in our little party that's been approved.
Can you shoot that in an email to Dorothea, please, just so we have all, all the items listed? And we are going to have to check with Zach, because they're, they are racing to finish up all the seasonal roadwork, sidewalks, everything. So we want to make sure we're coordinating it correctly with them.
And my last thing, and I'll leave you a little bit after this, is I just want to reiterate our offer to do a guided walk for all of you, to talk about all the issues that are involving the Arboretum, and to show you what it's actually about.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thanks, everybody, for the good work, too. Yes, I do have that on my member item list for this evening, to set a date for a walk through the Arboretum. Okay, so we can circle back. Yep, okay.
I wanted to, well, I think the weekend, I think. I wanted to, well, I think the weekend, I think this has been productive. We're all working together on getting things done that villagers want us to do. So I did want to mention one other thing. As we're looking at exploring the possibility of a trail here, one possible obstruction that I can see to that is that there was an emergency meeting called a few weeks ago by this board when the present majority of the board decided to post and prohibit access to the part of the park that we're looking to build the trail. And as we're talking about inviting, you know, talking about this with Scott, maybe I would walk back there. I don't even know if I'm allowed to. So what I would like to do is make sure that we're not blocked in that regard by imposing restrictions on ourselves that we might not necessarily need. So what I would like to propose is that we lift those restrictions that were placed at that meeting, so that we can discuss what the restrictions are that actually serve the public interest to allow us to move forward and continue to explore this area.
I would just like to say, it was, it was actually closed for a reason. There was a vote taken, and we do not have Steve Loth here tonight to speak additionally to the concerns that were raised. I think when we see the outcome of, you're taking this stuff back to the Canal Corporation, let's kind of keep moving this forward, and then we can make the decision at the next meeting.
Actually.
Why wouldn't we do that? What, what's wrong with that?
The decision on lifting the restrictions is what you're asking for.
I want to be able to walk in, and we're talking about exploring this trail.
You know, we have our.
Is there restrictions for everybody or for everyone?
Everybody.
You are the commissioners. You can walk your trail.
Well, we can, but, yeah, because technically we're the commissioners.
Can Scott?
Yeah, he's part of your team.
Can, can somebody who's operating equipment go back there and see if it's viable for using a Bobcat to move out the trail?
We're going to say, come back and give us an opinion, yes.
Because you're reporting back to, we're commissioners of the park, and we can see where we're going with this, but it's not open to the public. It's just, the idea of just reopening it with, I think, without Steve here, because he's in charge of the public safety, I would have a concern.
We can authorize somebody as well. For example, if the FOA wanted to go back there with some Boy Scouts and dig out some metal that's sticking out of the dirt, we can authorize that.
I wouldn't suggest it. I think, I think there's just too many, too many chances of people tumbling down and hurting themselves, and, I mean, if you want to accept the liability, then that's fine.
Right, okay, that's all I needed.
We have no plans of doing any work in that area. Yeah, right, okay, great. I'd say let us stay in, because there are some things back there.
I just would feel better with, you know, if there were some issues, that's.
We can work towards different options.
Yes, and we've got other action items.
We have other people, like, you know, the engineer can go back there, and so we can get, we can go back there.
Yes, yes, because we're commissioners. Did you know that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't think the caution tape would be a more suitable approach to use there instead of posting the area entirely from the public park?
That was, that was the decision made by, that was a vote taken by the, at the meeting.
So if you're, if you're asking to rechange, what does it say now? No access?
No access.
Yeah, it's no access.
I haven't seen it. Maybe next, let's go out, we'll do a tour, we'll see how like in our face it is, and we'll go from there. Zach?
I'd like to move on. I think it's been asked and answered. I don't know where else to go with this. We have an action plan. We've all, we don't have our, Steve here to discuss the public safety issues. I just don't see what, why we're hung up on this. We're taking action, we're trying to move things forward. What's another week? I, I don't know.
I would say I didn't love the wording then either, but I'm willing to defer.
Yeah, it's just like, oh, another day, having caution tape or signs.
Whatever.
Might have.
We'll get there.
We won't, yeah. We all want the arboretum, we all want things to go in a way that's safe for everybody, smooth, and it makes sense, and we also need to be aware of our financial commitment as well.
You okay deferring?
I'll defer until we've had more of an opportunity to look at this, but I do think that it's unfair and unnecessary to block the public from their own park.
Well, I gotta, I'm telling you that I walked it. And, I mean, you take it out of my ability and my judgment, if you open that up to the public, just saying.
Okay, okay, great. All righty, next up, authorization for setting a public hearing on October 24th at 6:00 p.m. of the proposed local law on the non-municipal permits. Do you have that one?
I have a question regarding, regarding that for Jeff. The point that I made this evening regarding the non-municipal use permit, you've already sent us a language. If the board were to consider the issue of frequency added to the proposal, would we need to have that now, and would it have to age and have it at a subsequent meeting? It cannot be, we cannot consider it on the 24th.
You are correct.
Well, I mean, you know.
Further, it is a further restriction, it's not a lightning. They're restricting it.
Okay, so that means that we, you need to rewrite for our consideration?
Write another paragraph, so whether it goes in here or.
Does the board have?
Well, I say do it once, do it right, you know? But, but I also, I was just having a question on a couple of things on my other sheet. Yep, lost that one. So the application comes in, Steve makes the determination, and then, I'm trying to understand the timeframes for this. Let me just call it up, I lost it on my iPad. Jeff, I had brought that up with you earlier about the timeframe, or, yeah, hang on. It was the timeframe that it would go on the, it would be acted on the following, the following meeting?
The concept of that was to give the board a chance to say, no, we want to take control of this.
So to me, okay, because I just want to talk through like the timeframe, because I think there's kind of two aspects to this. One has been feedback that we've gotten, you know, which we all know, that it takes a while, you know, you have, they have to wait a month, or they have to wait for the following meeting, maybe there was an issue or whatever. So part of it is addressing the fact that it's a regular event, and so that's something Steve can just approve. But the idea that there still is a lag of the, of the month, I think, doesn't serve the applicant. In other words, they're still waiting, they're still in this pipeline, and I think another piece of this is sort of streamlining the process for, for our public, you know? So one thing that I'd like the board to consider is, and we did this in Fort Lauderdale, where there would always be a call-up, we would call it a call-up. So Steve would say, I am going to approve this permit. He would mail it out to the board, and you would have, I think, I think in Fort Lauderdale, it was like a three-day window, you can review the permit and just say, you know what? I think this has changed, we need to take this and put it back on the agenda. So we still have that mechanism. Or if it's like, yep, it's the same thing, you know, to sell the Christmas trees, there is no action taken. Then the applicant just waited, you know, like three to four days, and then they can proceed. Do you know what I mean? So there's another piece to this, I think, that can help streamline it on the applicant's side, and I'd like the board to think about that. We still have that mechanism of oversight. We still have it. It's just, we're now saying, no matter what, the applicant still has to wait another month just because of our agendas.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, just help me understand that, that's why I want to talk through it.
So the way I read this in section B, prior to getting to four, so this is in section two and three. So two, the code enforcement officer reviews it, sees if there's a change, sees if there's any complaints. So is there a change, material change, and is there a complaint? So let's assume the answer is no.
Right.
So now we go to three.
Yep.
As soon as feasible, the code enforcement officer is required by the preceding subparagras shall apprise, so say they send an email, us a receipt of the application for reissue permit. They've determined whether or not there's been a material change, that's reiterating what was in number two, and then if there's been any complaints. So basically, three is saying the same thing as two, okay?
Yeah, that's a little more detail.
It's basically just saying now you're.
Thanks, talk me through this, because I just want to be sure.
So code enforcement officer gets it, nothing's different, no complaints. Now I tell the board, hey, I received this, it's not different, I've received no complaints, okay? So in the event, so now we're on to four. In the event that they determine that there's been no material changes in circumstance, and in the event there's been no complaints, the code enforcement officer shall issue such previously issued special permit on the same conditions, if any, as previously imposed by the Board of Trustees.
Gotcha.
My brief comment there is, instead of using the word shall, can we use the word may? Because what if Steve wants to bring it to us? I don't know if there's a mechanism in how this is worded that he could if there's no material change.
He still has that option.
I don't think so.
No, but I'd say you want him to have that option.
I want him to have that option, because right now, the only option for us to get it back is down in section six, but I'm going to get there for just a second.
Can I interject really quickly? Because this is the part where I'm hung up. We have no timeframe showing how this happens.
We don't need a timeframe, because we're giving Steve the authority to approve without us being involved.
We could add a timeframe in section.
But you see where I'm going? In other words, like, you know, what if Steve sits on it for two weeks? In other words, I think we need to have some kind of a mechanism.
Okay.
Right, we need a mechanism, that's all I'm saying. And then when he communicates, and he needs a timeframe to be able to communicate this with efficiency to our board.
So how long?
As soon as administratively feasible.
So is that enough? But that, I guess that's where I got a little.
I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I think where the timeframe comes in is in the next sentence.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that such special permit be reissued prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting of Board Trustees.
Right.
Which follows the date on which code enforcement officer has advised the Board of Trustees of his receipt. So that's where.
That's where.
You're getting involved.
Yep.
And to Dave's point about may, you really don't want your code enforcement office having a discretionary review of this stuff. It's got to be administrative review. So bang, the no material change, bang, no complaints, reissue.
What if we do this? What if under the shall reissue such previously issued permits on the same conditions, if any, as previously imposed by the board, subsequent to a five-day waiting period or something?
Call-up period or something.
Such that no trustee requests reviewed by the Board of Trustees? Something like that. Because what we don't want is, we don't want Steve to approve it, and two members to want it to come back to the public, and three members not comment, because we don't have a majority, we can't do it, right? So later on, it says, it does say the Board of Trustees can bring this back at any time, but that would require a motion. And I guess what I'm asking is, do we want Steve to have the authority to give a window of time of notice, maybe that's your call-up period, three days, five days, whatever, that any member of this board could hit the red button, like, and bring it back to us if we want?
Yeah, now let me talk about hitting the red button. No, I know, because then this goes into sort of another aspect of, do you just call it up because you just want to see it? So in other words, I, well, hang on, because I just don't want to go into like an arbitrary and capricious end of things. Do we have to show, and I'm asking Jeff this, too, like, do we have to show some sort of like due cause, like, I am calling it back with the following reasons, or it can be, you know, I just want to see it. I don't know, I.
The fact that you originally reviewed it, the fact that it is your jurisdiction to begin with.
Yes.
I don't think it's arbitrary and capricious for you.
Because it's already been before.
It's true, I don't want to review it.
I just want to cover the bases on this.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be arbitrary.
Okay, that's right.
It's your jurisdiction to begin with.
And could that decision, by way of this code, be done by one member of the board?
Could do it on however we want.
I think, so I think this was well thought out. It has the flexibility that we all talked about. I think my only question is, is might we want Steve to be able to prove it sooner than the next board meeting, right? Right now, that mechanism of saying, no, we want to review it, requires us to get to a board meeting. To what end?
No, see, my thought is that when Steve gets it and approves it, it's proved. It doesn't have to come back to us unless there's a change.
This is the continuation of this sentence that Jeff had just pointed out. So in the event there's been no changes, this is section four, the code enforcement officer shall reissue such previously issued special permit on the same conditions, if any, as previously imposed. In no event shall such special permit be reissued prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees, which follows the date on which the code enforcement officer has advised the Board of Trustees of this receipt. So Steve sends the receipt, hey, we got it.
Yeah, why do we have?
We have a board meeting in three weeks.
Yeah, why do we?
Yeah, why do we have that?
Do we want to wait, do we want to wait for that three-week period for one of us to raise an objection, or do we want to have it?
At the window, you're.
Be a window.
Yeah, that just goes via email.
Personally, one would hope that we don't have a lot of special meetings called for special permits.
Well, that's the goal.
Right, that's the rationale, that's why we're bringing this, because I'm saying, if we keep beating this dead horse, I mean, he sees it, and then we see it, I mean, we might as well just see it. So we're trying to get rid of that off the agenda for things that are showing up that we've already voted and approved.
So why don't we give a very loose ability for any member of the board to require it to come before the Board of Trustees?
If there's a.
Within a window.
Yeah, yeah.
And that Board of Trustee member, that single member, might be able to effectively block an event from happening if they're trying, if they're trying to get in. So if they're late bringing this permit forward, and one member decides, hey, we want to see it, maybe it's after their event, and it's done. So for example, the Frog House is October 8th. If we didn't have a board meeting, let's say Jeff got that application tomorrow, and we don't have a board meeting for two weeks, then if we have to wait for the board meeting, right, they couldn't do the event. Or we'd have to have a special event.
Well, that's kind of why we're supposed to have things 45 days in advance, and we don't get them 45 days in advance. So I know, but we need to make sure people give us a little leeway. You can't just give us something and say it was going to be tomorrow, right?
So how do we feel about a five-day window, or still require some amount of time, which could be 30 days?
No, I think that's too long. I say a three, three-day window. I mean, these are things that have already come before us.
They've already come before us.
Things that happen every year. That's the whole reasoning why we're, you know, looking forward.
You're right, it's addressing sort of the known entities that continually come before us. You're right, that's a good slogan.
I would say let's do five days.
I'd say three, but.
That's a week. Sometimes I don't even look at things till noon, but I'd say do five, and I would say let one member of the board require it to come back, right?
I'm kind of up for the three days. I mean, you either know or not.
Are you talking about three business days or three days?
Yeah, three business days.
Let's say three business days.
Three business days.
So instead of that sentence saying, "prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees," it'll just say, "events shall such special permit be reissued prior to..." I'll figure it out.
Within three days.
Jeff, you know where he's going with this?
I know what you want.
Okay. We have the wordsmith over there.
So does that mean that now we cannot bring this to?
And, and the other thing. And without request of any board member to rehear the special permit, something like that.
We don't need, we don't need it.
Right.
Well, I should know.
In that three-day window, if any member of the board shall object, then it comes back.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think everything else was good.
But do we have to, do we still have to set a public hearing on this?
Nope.
No.
We gotta let it age again.
And.
Oh, we have to let it age again? And then you gotta have a public hearing, you know?
It's not ready to go.
Okay.
We're gonna wait. He's gonna write.
Yeah, he's doing the, he's working the magic.
Yeah, I just wanted to raise a minor concern with having a trustee red-flag things and bring it back to us. I guess, you know, some people, I'm sure nobody in this room, but some people might argue that even as a whole, this board is not extremely functional all the time. I'm worried about giving one person the power to be able to call something back and have this part of a discretionary review process when we might or might not be meeting in a timeline that's convenient for that application to be reviewed. So I could just see the potential. I would rather have us either act as a board or not act, because that's the way that the board works. You know, we don't unilaterally take action by ourselves and bind the board outside of a meeting. But in this case, you do, because you bring it back under discretionary review.
See, my thought is that I have a lot of optimism. And I would think that if I had an issue, I would call Justin or call. And I would say, what do you guys think?
I know, that's what.
You know, I wouldn't just like say, I wouldn't have just like push the button. I would just call somebody and say, what do you guys think? This is what he's thinking about.
Yeah, just say, I think we should call it up.
Of course, you wouldn't do that having a meeting of the minds outside of the public meeting.
No, no. I would call one other board member and just run it by them. I wouldn't make a decision without.
I think our attorney is raising another issue with the potential for leading us into open meetings law violations with this kind of a policy.
If I just ask one other board member for an opinion, that's, that's okay. Yeah, I'm not gonna call everybody.
Yeah, go ahead, Lilly. Thank you.
Yep. I, the way I'm hearing this, though, is that if one trustee does not have the power to, to, um, to say no to the permit, they are just saying they want it reviewed by the entire board. So the entire board would be making the final decision. But they would be requesting that it be brought before the board for further review.
So if there's a time crunch, then we could always have a special meeting knowing? Because we've done that so many times.
Let's eliminate special meetings.
I know, I know.
I've been for that for years. I know we wanna make it so easy for the applicants, but there is a responsibility, if you're holding an event for timelines, to get things in. I mean, 45 days for a new event, I think saying maybe 30 days for renewal, and that gives time if something's flagged for them to get to a meeting for the approval of the event. It's not killing the vet.
Depends. We just have the Frog House. I mean, you know.
Well, and it's nothing against the Frog House, I would say.
People have to be more responsible and be more prepared and get it out early.
Well, we would all want that.
Isn't this the first time we've told them they have to have a?
No, they, they used to do, and I suppose in the past, and something happened and they stopped. So they, so I, I'm not trying to pick on any entity, but there is a certain responsibility, if you're conducting an event, to get all your approvals and have your backs lined. We have to do it when we do things. I think 30 days is reasonable.
Yeah, but then again, these are, these are like, we see these events all the time. 30, you know, this isn't like for every.
No, no, no. Just to have information, your application in 30 days instead of 45.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, that gives, in case someone has a problem on the board, time to get in on any agenda.
Why don't you just leave the 45 days and then have to screw around?
I'm fine with that, too. I'm just saying, avoid.
Well, we always waive it anyway.
You could have set yourself up for many special meetings. I mean, I'm just saying, let's, let's put the onus on people getting their applications.
I'm thinking about someone reading this code, trying to figure out, well, is it 45? Or is it 30?
I'm good with that. I was just trying to come up with.
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's a good thought, but I agree.
Okay.
Pause. If you put the 45 back in, does the code enforcement officer have the right to waive it? Because if they don't, then?
Then it's just reissue.
Well, they have to waive it, otherwise it's coming back to us all the time.
So he could, should he choose to waive the 45-day intercom time zone?
Yeah, because it's, it's, it's an administrative renewal. At that point, it's not discretionary.
The operative word you used was reissue of what had already been an approved permit earlier by the board, year after year after year. New permits, not even part of this.
Right. Well, then I, I would just say leave it out and go with the three-day thing.
Yeah.
And, and let one board member object. And Justin, to your concern, I think Lilly had the appropriate response.
It's gonna come back to us.
All it does is bring it back to the board. In a worst-case environment, somebody decides to hit that red button persistently just to be, like, let's say somebody doesn't like the reissuing structure, so just for every single one, they bring it back? Well, then we make another code.
Yeah, and then we have to reevaluate it.
Right. But I don't think we're gonna get that. Maybe we will someday, but I don't know. I'm okay with it. See how it works.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I think, thanks for the good work on this and everybody's input. I mean, I think, I think this is a good thing. You know, it really can streamline the process internally and also, you know, for the boards and also for an applicant. You know? Jeff, do you have enough sort of to go on here? I'm seeing the nodding, yes, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna hold.
I'm taking out that, that sentence in its entirety. "No event shall such special permit be reissued prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees."
It's just gonna be three days and no objection.
Okay.
No.
Right. Okay, any before we, we're good?
That was a.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Jeff's got his action, okay. Excuse me. Sorry. Uh, let's see, okay, so that's, we're not gonna set a date. You're coming back, okay. Next up, then, is gonna be setting the public hearing for the proposed local law on board membership. And that's for the 24th.
Yeah, you guys set it. If, that's my recommended date to you.
Okay, that's coming back.
October 24th.
Okay.
Yes, I have enough.
I will make, I will make that motion.
Do we have seconds?
How seconds?
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion, yeah. Do you wanna discuss this?
I do. I have a question, which is, Jeff, the way it was worded, I think Section 112-4, that A, had, had a line in there that you removed, A1, which said, "two members of the APRB may reside outside the village provided..." Right? So we removed that, because now everybody's in the village. My question of that is, is do we not have three members right now of the HPV? One that is on, and one that's an alternate? Or maybe two that are on, one's an alternate, or? So my question is, by removing that line, is there the possibility that two alternates step in and one already? Where you have three members in the town based on the previously appointed boards?
I see what you're saying.
Right? So by not having it in there, the previously appointed board in that there are, I think, three members of the current HPV, it might allow for three members to be that board.
I think two are whole village members and one's an alternate.
Yeah. So I think we have to still have that line in there.
Makes sense.
Can you just say that again?
Yeah. The line, there's no line that prevents three alternates being in the town. And so if on board that night, there was three vacancies, and those three alternates stepped in, the only way that only two of them could have previously?
So alternates weren't included in this?
Well, the, the way the line read is, two members of the board. Well, members of the board in the moment are the ones who are on the board.
Right, I'm saying that.
Not including the alternates.
Right, but we didn't make a, we didn't make a suggestion that even alternates need to be village residents.
Well, you don't need to, once they're all village residents.
And that's already implied.
Yeah, that's implied. But because of the current composition of the board, there are three town members. It could be that you have a majority town membership based on the existing composition. And so by removing that line, creates a risk that, this doesn't occur with the planning and zoning board.
Because the alternates are.
Because there are no currently sitting alternates sufficient to get over the two-member hurdle that previously existed.
Two alternates permitted for board. So when you said three alternates for HPV, it's actually two alternates for HPV?
One's village and then building.
So I think they get aged out as?
Yeah. Every two age out except for the HPV, which currently has three members, two city members and one alternate that are outside of the village.
But we're, I thought this was addressing it so that they'd age out.
They did. They age out.
They age out.
Yeah, they age out.
But by removing this one line of code, that alternate could have stepped in for a village member on the HPV, thus having three town members on the HPV for that one particular meeting.
Currently.
Yeah. So there's gotta be some.
Well, I think, yes, I think the chairperson of that, of that board is, the responsibility is theirs to make certain that everyone who is on that board is, can be voting that night. In other words, that person is responsible to make certain that there are three members and and only two, two from the town.
That's correct. They've always done that.
Yeah.
It's not in this version of the code.
That's right. So we have to put it back in.
You can't put it back. Can't put it back exactly since you were.
No.
Yeah, because it's gotta say, "and no event shall more than..." Whatever. More than two, about two, two members of a sitting board be residents of the town.
However you want to.
So you have sort of the language to?
Go back to Jeff.
All right.
Okay, so, so then the question is, is that more restrictive? So we would need to bring this back? Okay, just so we're, you know, as the action items.
So then we can't set up, we can't set up a meeting on that because it's gonna come back.
Sure about it, that's all. So now we have to come up with another date?
Well, we have to have it see it.
We have to get the local law back.
It has to come back. So we're looking at November?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And speaking of November, our context here, I just noticed our meeting for November is scheduled on election night. It can't be on election night. Move it to November 14.
Can I move, uh, I'm in.
November 14?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Where are you going?
Okay, so you're talking about moving it to the 14th? Does that mean that we're gonna have two meetings?
Nope. Nope. We have one meeting in November unless the board decides to.
Oh.
Yeah. We have to have this holiday, yeah. And then one in, one in December as well.
I can live from Rome.
You can call in and be a resident, but you wouldn't be allowed to vote.
Are you guys gonna be all right without me?
Yeah, we'll struggle.
All right.
Yeah.
So I'm, like, I'm feeling upset, but I know. Okay, so we're good, we're good on this one. We're gonna bring it back, it'll age, okay. Next up, discussion on the proposed local law for a tree ordinance.
Oh, yeah, tree city.
I've got a lot of notes on this one. I'm gonna rattle off my.
Yeah, let's start, let's all dive on in on this one.
Okay. So the first one was on 192-4. Remove the parentheses at the end of one.
Yeah, I don't have the change.
Which one was it again, Dave?
So this is 192-4-1. Remove the parentheses, because the sentence, it should just be, "any tree on private property in the village of Pittsburgh shall be made to..." Get rid of the parentheses to the Board of Trustees, Com, Plan Board, or the Tree Board. So the parentheses actually make a hanging sentence without a limit.
Well, good. I use application for permit to cut or remove blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
"Any tree on private village shall be made to the..." Pick a board.
Right, and you wouldn't put parentheses there, and it says the same thing.
Oh, yeah, but the, the point of the parenthetical is to choose the board. This board chooses the board to make.
It indicates choice, am I correct? The preference.
Yeah.
And if you remove them, doesn't it indicate the same choice?
No.
No.
Because you, you need to pick a board.
It is showing the inclusion of options. Am I correct in terms of?
Yeah, yeah. So you wanna give it to Board of Trustees, you wanna give it to a board.
That's a very unique end of sentence. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll put it on.
I mean, you have to make that decision.
Right. Have to make that decision.
Right, exactly.
Who's gonna, who's gonna do this?
Right. And if there were no parentheses, you wouldn't be given that option.
No, you're making the decision before we publish your hearing.
Yeah. Oh, that's what we're doing.
You need to make a decision.
We here right now are making that decision.
He's giving us the option.
Thank you. I thought this was like the final wording, and I was looking at.
This is a draft of the legislation.
This is a draft that you have never looked at before.
So this is the working.
Yeah, okay. So we have to make.
We don't have a tree ordinance right now.
Right, okay. So then this goes to the next question. Are we gonna have a tree board?
What, what we have now as a tree city, and you have an option of, if you do not have a tree board, who say, you know, we're pretty tiny, it's the DPW, it would be our DPW, which handles our, I mean, that is how it has been set up when we filed for it to be a tree city. Just so you know, just.
Okay.
Yeah. Where, where are you going?
Now, he was asking a question.
We never passed that local law, so I wonder if it.
Yeah, that's how we did it through my tour, then we handled it different.
All right. Is that the right spot for it? The DPW? Not the Plan Board? Yeah, DPW.
It's, it's usually A or B with any municipality. And because of our, because of the size typically of the municipality, typically, it would be, with a municipality this size, it would at least be started with your DPW, because they handle all the inventory, they handle everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
For me, it would be them or the Board of Trustees, because some of this could get a little interesting.
In a nod.
So, so I guess, and this is, I think, Justin, maybe you brought this up, So, I guess, and this is, I think, Justin, maybe you brought this up, but the, somebody said it was really restrictive because according to the way it's written now, it's any tree in the whole village. So it takes away people's private property trees. And my biggest concern was the tree scape, where the tree scape on the public view way.
Street trees?
Yeah, kind of like the HPP does, it's all by public view, right? So if somebody is taking a tree down in the backyard, no one can see it, you know, doing it. It's a question, you just get back to the question. Can you, I will go after that. Can we, you know, that might be really restrictive for somebody who, you know, may be putting on a swing set, or, you know, doing something in the back of the property. My big concern for the tree ordinance was really the tree scape. You know, the trees along the village side are protected by us, but the trees on the other side of the sidewalk, they go to the front of the property, the front of the home, the front of the structure, are not, they're considered private. So technically, because we don't have ordinance, those trees can be removed for any reason. That's kind of the reason why I wanted to bring an ordinance.
You know, I think you're raising an interesting point, but I think it also speaks to a larger point of what a tree ordinance does, and why would we would look at it? And also because as a tree city, and also as a climate smart community, it is a component of our sustainability initiative. So, and I've worked with this in other communities. The ordinance has always, when I've worked with it, protected the entire canopy. You look at the canopy in terms of urban forestry for your whole community, whether it's our street trees, which are always, in fact, Jeff, they're addressed elsewhere in code, am I correct? Our street trees?
They won't be if you doubt this.
If we do this.
Because we're gonna, we're going to get rid of that.
Street trees mean village trees owned by the village?
The ones, yes, the ones along.
Along with, between the sidewalk and the street?
Governor 176.
Yeah.
And now they would be covered under.
It would be, it would be all inclusive. And my thought is, and just in terms of best practices, we should look at the entire canopy, and there's a couple ways to do that. I can tell you, for example, in my backyard, I have two huge trees. They're 65 feet tall, and they are invasives. It's $10,000 to for me to take them down, you know? I want them gone, you know? We can put this in our ordinance in such a way that we know we can allow for elimination of invasives. Okay, we also can put in protection of any historic trees. For example, we were looking at today, what town was it, Jeff? Bedford, Bedford, New York. Where they have any tree within an historic district, it becomes sort of, you know, designated and is part and parcel of the identity of the historic district.
Right.
I'm thinking of some really large trees in our village that we have in, like, we call it Bill McBride's old house. There's essentially almost a champion walnut tree to the rear of that property. So we have to be thinking about what does that mean to lose a tree like that in entirety for the community and for our canopy.
So at least the historic trees that are protected and we.
Right, so how do we put in, yeah, that mechanism to do that? Okay, so that's one piece that I think we really should look at. And what was the history of that tree? It was like the.
I don't know, but I believe that it was like a beating place or.
It was like a council tree?
A council tree for the, yeah.
So that's a cool thing, you know, we want to protect.
Oh, sure, for historic trees, oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I get that.
So, yes?
Yeah.
Can you give your name, like, excuse, your name?
Jenny's girl, 411 Spurrow, Pittsburgh, natural addressment. If you're thinking about the environment and considering energies, solar panels are now allowed in the village. And trees do obstruct in more urban communities solar access for solar panels, passive solar construction. Perhaps on that side of houses in this village, the HPP might consider increased window space for solar gain. But if that's the case, and even in this environment, you don't want to have more than about 12% of your wall area in windows or else you lose any advantage heat gain by heat loss when on the south window. But if you're even in an older home, if you have nice windows on the south side, you can have some good solar gain, but only if you don't get a shade on your windows. I'm not, I'm not making a recommendation, you're discussing this, I'm putting out a consideration that you may not have thought about or considered with historic architecture. Because it's my 112-year-old house has wonderful south windows. In the winter, all the trees that are in front of it have lost their leaves and it's a tremendous solar gain in my house, it's a huge heat gain. So it's just, just putting it out there as one more thing to confuse the discussion.
Thank you.
That's good, thanks, Jenny.
Appreciate the confusion.
Very much so.
So, okay, but, you know, meanwhile, you know, there's, I think, mechanisms that we do need to look at, you know? And again, I would urge the board to look at the entire canopy of our village and the preservation of that and the protection of it. Because we had tree, I, we had trees cut down right across the street from me, it was, was it Florence that did it? They were massive.
It would make the church, our church.
Yes.
It was gigantic.
Yeah, and so, you know, there's a reason why we're looking at this and a reason why we should. And so I think we need to look at the entirety of it, yeah, Lily.
I have several questions. One is, with this ordinance, would we have then any recourse when Argenee or the others came through to cut?
Not if they own, not if they're doing them in there.
So it doesn't authorize any new protection initially?
Yeah, you know, they have the right to trim what they need there right away.
Yep.
Now, what Zach did tell me, though, is when Argenee does trim, they don't trim appropriately, so they'll just trim away from their lines, but they don't do it to the benefit of the tree. So we, could we, in our ordinance, say that trimming and pruning needs to be done for the safety of the tree? Making Argenee have to trim and prune both sides, not just one? I don't know if we can do that.
I don't know.
I am sure that in their easement, the word reasonable appears. So that they have to do their trimming in a reasonable way.
And if it's not reasonable, we can go back and.
Well, what we should be is ahead of it, try to educate Argenee.
That was part of the negotiation.
The crews will start to learn a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that because that happened a couple years ago, as you know, they came through and just. And part of it is, they are supposed to have a regular trimming program where they come around and it's on a five-year cycle.
Right.
They haven't done trimming in almost, I think it was 13 years. So there's a lot, it was a lot of overgrowth into the waters. And so they have subcontractors come through, you know, these people. Some are good, some are not so good. So they really damaged a lot of trees, and we ended up negotiating with them and getting trees replaced. And they also agreed to take down for us as sort of remediation. I think Zach can remember the number, but I think they took down either three or four trees that were diseased. And then they also helped remove a couple of invasives. And so that was about, I don't know, maybe $16,000 or $20,000 worth of work that they did as remediation for our village. But again, it's just that their utility, you know? And we literally walked down street by street that they went through, and what about this tree? What about, no, that's done correctly. You know, and they talked about the surgical cuts and how they're allowed to do it. So I don't know how we would enforce that with them. I agree with you, it's, you know, it's a, and then what came out of that, though, is that now they have expanded, they have government liaisons, and they are supposed to give us ample notice of when they would come through and cut, so we can be there with them. That's what I would, I would be on site, but I don't trust it, you know? So that was what came out of that, what happened a couple of years ago. Yeah, that was a big deal, yeah, Lily, appreciate it.
So, and let us say, as this ordinance is in place, and it designated a tree on somebody's property, and a limb falls off in their driveway and crashes their car. Now, are they allowed to deal with that, or do they have to come and get a permit for the removal of the limb?
No, 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 this, no. We're talking about trees.
Yeah, we're talking. I'm saying the tree.
Right, but then, but you're.
Now the tree is a danger. Now they, do they have to, and the person comes to remove the limb and they said, you know, you've got a problem here, this. Do they have to wait and go through the soul process before they can have the tree removed?
They would talk with the building inspector, he would have to come in and evaluate whether it's appropriate for the tree to be removed.
The building inspector is making the decision here, is that what you're saying?
I think, I can't remember whether there's a rule sheet here or not.
I thought there was, about public safety or something, wasn't there a safety thing? Maybe I.
That would be your permit to cut down, or you would describe?
192-6.
Yeah, the next thing. Yeah, which constitutes a danger to the health, safety. Yeah.
So you don't have to wait?
I don't think you do. Yeah, so, and Zach would be, thank you, because Zach, they would know too. And we, and one of the things I'm, that we also need to do is we, just as we hire a village engineer, I think we are, because we are moving forward with this, we understand that we need to make this commitment, and we all want to make a commitment to this. We should have a village arborist that we really know that we can go back to and count on for this kind of stuff, just as we have with Scott Harder, for example. You know, so we can get someone in as needed, like, you know?
So the main question that pops to my head, because we have spoken about this in the past, is that how a resident might feel to have a protected tree now that they've lived in the house for 30 years and now they've discovered that they, their tree is now protected? So we need to wait to hear from the public, see their reaction to having restrictions placed upon them.
That's why we have a public hearing.
Right, so I'm just saying.
That's why we have a public hearing, and I think also, part of this, don't you think, is educational? About why would we have a tree ordinance, and what does this do for our community in entirety?
Right.
You know, and why would we want to make this commitment to protect our canopy? You know, and I think, I think that's really important, the whole educational component.
I agree, I'm just thinking about the person, for instance, who wants to put that addition on the back, and now the planning and zoning board have given them permission, and they have enough setback. But there's a tree right there, and the tree now is protected, so that now, they're not able to do their, their. I'm just trying to play.
Some plants are only good for a year, aren't they, and then, anyway. So, I mean, you gotta plan for all that stuff. And if it's in the ordinance, you have to come and figure out if you can cut your tree out.
Yeah, it's like anything, it's like part of a setback or a variance.
I'm not, this isn't, you know, this isn't my ordinance, this is.
Right, just like those.
I know.
You can have variants, but also there's, you know, there's land restriction for doing additions from HPP. I mean, we won't let a huge district.
I'm just saying it adds another restriction that people are playing about windows.
And there's restriction and there's protection. And so I think that's where we are with the board, is how do we, how do we make that balance work?
The board has looked at this for years and years.
Yes.
Has come down on the side of, we're not going to mess around with it. And this may, this board may come to a different conclusion because of where we are in our environment, right?
Where the sound is, where we are, you know?
And we do have examples of where trees have been taken down that we now regret and are unhappy about. So, I mean, but then, you know, I mean, it's entirely up to the board how to handle this.
Okay, yeah.
But we'll go to public hearing.
Public hearing, and everybody probably is, definitely the board.
Just a couple of quick things on the branch comment. So we have a branch on a tree that's protected, it falls in a storm. There's a prohibition at that point, it's unlawful for any person to cut down, remove, destroy, or substantially alter the habit. But this time, tree's already been damaged by this limb falling. So the property owner doesn't have to come to the board to have somebody go up and cut the branch square and either tar.
Trim it back.
Whatever they're supposed to do, right? So that's fine, they can just go out and take that action. Now, the next part, the removal of the tree, let's say a lightning bolt comes and it cracks it in half. Now it's a danger to everybody. So this is the removal part. At this point, you're really not destroying or substantially altering the habit because the tree's. So I think this is where the removal of the tree, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong in this language.
Can you read it from two?
I'm reading from 126-6-1.
One, okay.
"Any tree which constitutes a danger to health, safety, and welfare of residents or general public for whatever reason shall be removed." Or, there's no comma, but, "or the habit thereof altered by the owner of said real property as directed by the building inspector made with the advice or recommendations." Then it goes on to say, "the directive of the building inspector, and then if the property owner fails to comply." What's interesting about that removal section, who determines that it's a danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents? This is sort of written with the intent that the building inspector makes that determination first, but it's really not quite as clear as, does it need to be? I guess in the event that a tree gets hit by lightning, can't they just go in and take it out?
No.
No, so is that because of number?
Okay, you're saying, in the future, if this ordinance is passed, no? The answer to that question is no.
Right, they call him, call the village office and say, hey, I got a tree that's a problem.
Yep.
Mr. Building Inspector, please come over here and tell me what I can do with it.
Okay, so I would be the example. A tree fell on our house. We have a tree on our house. And it was a weekend, it was, I think it was a Friday, that Kelly called me and said, there's a tree on your house. And, but if I had had to wait for somebody to come, you know, nobody's at village hall, I had to wait till Monday, I have something, my roof is wide open and there's a tree in it.
So the whole tree came down with the roots out and everything?
Yeah.
No, the tree's down.
So, yes, down, it's down.
Action, it's down.
It's not surviving.
It's down, you need to remove it.
Yeah, this is not alive at all. This is a tree that's substantial, that's alive, that we, that's living on.
I'm gonna think of a different example because this is recent. It's that gorgeous oak tree that's right, Jeff, at Bowton, and so, big old oak tree. We love the oak tree. However, it's compromised, it has had two, no, three significant branches come off that tree. One was in a, two were in a storm, and then one is, it's dying slowly from the inside. The tree's aging out. One of the big branches is right over a resident's home, right over her bedroom. And so they were concerned about the safety with that tree. And so, and Zach went on, we had, how many, three or four arborists look at it. And finally, the last arborist, we ended up making that decision to trim it back by a full third, knowing that the tree's still going to die, but we can save it for a few more years. I mean, it is in the process of dying. So there was mitigation for that, you know, in other words, it's like, okay, you know we have an issue. We came in, we addressed it, we didn't remove the tree. It would be the same kind of circumstance even under this. If there was a branch that came down, the tree may not be fully compromised, you know, but we would have.
But the branch that came down.
Goes.
Can be removed.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's just, exactly, you're taking care, not removing the tree.
Proving it appropriately.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so my idea would be slightly different, which is, what if a tree uproots and it just falls on a house? So now the tree is potentially able to live in that state, there's a number of trees that'll go on and die. It'll take a while until it dies. Is it technically at that point?
It's over.
Gone.
It's over.
It's over.
I just had that happen with an apple tree that had over 300 apples in the last big rain. Completely uprooted, over.
You have to say uprooted trees are able to grow?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess the question is a tree, okay? So this comes to the definition of a tree. A tree with a diameter of six inches or more, a point at which four feet above grade, in the case of that, without permanent issues for someone that's been. I mean, the definition of a tree doesn't say that it's.
Living.
Standing as it normally would. Again, I'm just making sure that in an emergency situation from a resident, a tree comes down that may still reasonably continue to live, right? Can somebody just come in and get it out of there?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you for telling me to know.
If anybody tried to come to a judge anywhere.
I just want to make sure that residents feel empowered to fix things that are clearly wrong.
Sure. Reasonable, remember that name, that word? Jeff likes it.
Question for you.
Yeah.
Jeff, this looks at section 192-4-3. "The decision of the board or whoever shall be based on the following criteria. This is our willingness to allow them to take it down." I'll make first comment to Ginny's point. Might it be appropriate to have in there something to the effect of to enable greater alternative energy efficiencies, or to enable energy efficiency? Do we want to put something in there as a reason why somebody could take a tree down specific to energy and energy efficient goals and standards?
So I guess the question is, if the HPP is approving the solar panels, right? Should they be the ones to approve their removal of the tree?
No.
No.
No, okay.
That could be.
The authority's already vested in people.
I just wanted to have.
Yes, now we could put that if a solar project was approved by our HPP board?
Yeah, you could have any line in there that says something to the effect of, there's flexibility sufficient to remove a tree to enable energy efficiency or clean energy efficiency. You want to be careful with that.
We want, well, hang on, what do you think about this?
It doesn't have to be an absolute, you can still deny it, it's just giving you an option.
How, so what with the language, I see where you're going with it, like a mechanism to.
To not be.
Well, you sort of got it in a seal a little bit.
Yeah. Oh, that's true. But it's still a little vague, don't you think?
On ecological systems. The effect of the removal of all things there on ecological systems.
Yeah, so I mean, you could, you could make it more specific and say, the effect of the removal or alteration thereof on the ability to provide clean energy for the property.
You might say solar access.
Clean energy or solar access?
Well, there's wind. Because you can get the little mini kilo down there.
Yeah, so.
Solar or wind. I would just say, green energy?
I think that's a call for the board, or do you, do you want?
Trees would only affect solar gain, solar access.
Do you want?
Solar access is the.
For trees, right, so, when, when would?
Potentially could, because I've had friends who put in wind turbines in California and depends how they position through these.
I think clean energy is.
Clean energy, why wouldn't we put in clean energy, what's wrong with that?
I like the clean energy.
It covers possibility.
Are you considering allowing wind dogs?
No, it's not, it's not necessarily about that at all, it's just technology keeps changing. And so I think just using the term clean energy.
But that, but we're not allowing, it would have to go to HPP.
Of course it would.
If you have this clean energy, you're opening it up to wind power.
But the HPP would be the one.
And let me just back up and suggest that this section here is simply a line item by line item of flexibility that the board doesn't necessarily need to employ.
Right.
It just gives you a mechanism by which to.
No, I think, right.
Ginny offers, you know, fair comment, which is, do we want it to be for anything other than just simply solar access? Personally, I think solar access is a first start, and other things, I don't need to necessarily go down that road. My initial thought was just to create a mechanism by which we could say yes if it's preventing solar access.
So the language would be what, the effect of the removal or alteration?
Something to enable.
Ability to provide, we don't want the same energy then? Solar energy?
No, they all want solar.
So say solar. Solar access, solar access?
As it's defined for some power.
Solar access.
Okay, Jeff's taking notes, so wordsmith.
Yeah, wordsmith, something to enable, and again.
Excuse me one second, real fear. I'm sorry, I thought you had, okay.
Number of the public?
No, me. Number of village hall?
Oh, I was just gonna say, do you want to put a percentage of gain on the efficiency?
This isn't so precise, this is a little bit.
I'm just saying, because it's such a phrase.
This is a balancing act too, so if we come into it and, yeah, it provides great solar access and we still want to deny it, we can't.
I'm just saying, I didn't know.
It's giving us a mechanism. It's giving them a mechanism to approve, should we choose to approve it, of one of these mature trees, not that we necessarily need to take that one.
Okay, what else you got?
Quick question on number four of that same.
All right, so, I have a question. Do you want the DPW making this balancing test decision?
Can we put in, because I do think we are gonna end up having, just like, as I said before, a village arborist, you know, to, as a consultant, you know, on a consultative basis, the same way Scott Harder is as our village engineer. Do we want to put that in as another possibility, you know?
How do you get a tree board with, you know, with the advice of the arborist?
Something like that, just so we're, there's, I'm making it clear that there's an option to have a professional.
I mean, I'm just. All the people listed already in section three could, should they choose to employ an arborist. They don't have to if they choose not to.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you want.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
The DPW making this judgment call?
No, but that's not how it's worded yet, currently it's for adjustment.
Right, right.
Well, I can't say that for all the big stuff that goes on, like the big stuff, we always get an arborist, which is why I'm thinking, why wouldn't we? It's gonna be cheap, you know, we just know that we're gonna have somebody that we can work with, that's all. This way we do it with Scott Harder, nothing more than that.
I don't think it needs to be in here.
I don't know, okay.
All right, because, because in 192-4-1, we have given it to the tree board, which is DPW.
Yeah, the DPW is the tree board, because that is how we are recognized as a tree city. That is part of how it was, it.
But.
We submitted, no, I was just saying, that's where we are right now.
That was the language.
However, the tree board does not have to be the DPW.
No, that's true, but I think frankly, the DPW probably has more knowledge than a few other people.
Right, and I agree with that.
And they always tap into an arborist as needed.
Seems to me that, I don't know, I just wondered if you want to put the DPW in that position of doing this balancing act required by three.
Yeah, there's not gonna be many, is, is three specific to both the village trees as well privately owned trees?
Yeah, because that's, that's the reason why we're doing this.
Yeah, right. Well, I don't know.
Yeah, so in one, you've given it to the, to the tree board, which is currently the DPW, and then presumably for consistency's sake, you would, in three, you would make it the tree board.
And then, but with the understanding, and they do this anyway, that they clearly for, you know, significant trees and projects, they always get an arborist. We've always done that.
I just, I just feel like this decision's a little, okay, great.
I agree.
You know, when, when.
So again, then I go back, do we say certified arborist?
Well.
What do we, you know?
Again, I think the decision, what I'm heading at is, should it be this board who's making those kind of decisions?
They don't, I wouldn't do it without an arborist.
No, no, I know that.
But then we could reach out and get a, and we could reach out and get a consultant.
Right, right.
And we could reach out and get a consultant. So you're saying just take it off of this.
Just remove them completely and bring it back to us.
I mean, because really, that's what you're doing now. If the DPW want, thinks a big tree ought to come down, they're gonna come to you and ask.
They do, they always do. They've never not done that.
So.
Just keep it with us then?
I'm thinking.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
I mean, you made the case.
It's not gonna happen that often.
You know, yeah, exactly.
Do we need a tree board to be, yeah, trustees could be a tree.
We'll be, we're the tree board, and we, in other words, you know, you never need an MBA, you just need a higher one. We don't need to be arborists, we just need a higher one.
How do we feel about?
The commissioner's entry.
Planning board, no.
Oh, wow, look at all the titles we have now.
Give this to planning board?
Yeah, give the tree board of the planning board.
Your call.
I, I think it should come back to us. It's, it's our canopy for the entire, I don't know, I just think, let's, can we at least start with us?
Okay, sure, moving on.
Let's just start with our board.
Okay, my question to you is, all right, so should nothing apply in three? Section three, 192-4-3. The list of things that we could permit individual of the tree, none of those apply. They just want to take it out. Can we still approve it based on the four? I think the answer is yes, based on how it's worded.
So it'd be the board of trustees should have anything?
Because they're agreeing to replace it?
Yes.
In kind?
I think, I think the answer.
You think the answer is no?
Board trustees shall have the authority to deny a granting application to remove or off the tree, such a grant, and they may replace in such tree, so. You could say, to be for clarity, the board of trustees shall have the authority, based on consideration of the factors in the forward-looking section, to deny a granting, because that's, that's what I think is intended here. Remember, I played, I mean, I created this from another order.
Yeah.
So I think the intention is that they work together, three and four.
Yeah, I like that wording you just said.
Okay, now I have a question, you guys. And then it says, okay, so we're on four, and I'm going down, one, two, three, line four. Tree being replaced of the same or similar species. What if, what if it was an invasive species? Why would we, in other words, I think we need to, do we put, you know, a non-invasive or native or, you know, something to identify that.
Go to the or, and I think it allows you to do that.
Or some other, I just want to make sure that there was something, I see.
Some other reasonable.
Reasonable conditions.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Because let's say somebody cuts down a big maple, but you want another big maple on the property, you have it be similar. But if it's invasive, you just give it a different condition, put in a.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's covered.
I think that's a good question. I think it's, I think it's okay.
Do you see where we're going with it?
Yeah, and I, and I'm not that worried, because any arborist or tree board that says replace it with the same invasive species is not.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure it's really accurate, okay?
I think we're good.
Yeah.
Justin had, you had your hand up.
Yeah. I'm still working out my own thoughts on this legislation overall, but originally I was thinking that it would apply more to heritage, heritage type trees, and this is feeling more encompassing than that, which may be okay. What I would do though is not have it applied to invasive trees. I don't think we need to protect invasive trees or non-native trees from the gecko.
So maybe you put that in upfront.
You can make that in the tree definition.
Yeah.
In the tree definition.
I would do that, and then, I don't know how that.
So in other words, you're saying invasive tree is taken down, they don't have to place another tree in their place?
In other words, the intention, because you're right, the intention of this is to protect our canopy of non-invasive and native species. That's our intention. We always have that intention, because that's part of why we would be sustainable.
A non-invasive tree with a diameter of four, and then you could.
So then we'll have to just put non-invasive in the definition.
Non-invasive and four native. They're two different things.
Right, because you've got things like the Norway maples that are all over the village, and they're kind of garbage.
They're totally garbage. They're weak tree.
I don't know if they're classified as invasive, but they're not native. Well, then I just broke your theme basically.
Yeah, I would like some, if an invasive comes down, I would like something else planted in their place.
Yeah, so it's just not removed, and then there's no replacement in the canopy. See, because it's, it's also about canopy management, you know? Now, you raise a good point.
So if an invasive is removed, you don't want to ask for them to replace another tree in that space?
I, well, it's interesting, because I, as I said, I have these two huge invasive Norway maples, and when I, if I can ever get them, take them down, I would replace them immediately with native oak.
Right, well, would you?
But do we want that, you know, code somehow?
Right, because I'm saying, what if people just take down all the invasives and they're, and then they just leave a blank, blank, you know, there.
I just think that's education, not legislation. I agree with that sentiment. I just wouldn't regulate it to that extent.
Also, that can be part of a tree program, that's the other side of it. When we do our Arbor Day event, or I give away trees, and we can, you know.
Okay, I get that, Justin, because I know that you're concerned about the restrictiveness of this whole concept, so, yeah.
An invasive or what?
Not a.
Non-native.
Where were we here? Sorry. We were saying, we.
One of the trees that are allowed.
The purpose is a non-invasive or species or native is what we want.
No.
Well, so what we're talking about is maybe if you, Jeff is considering adjusting the definition of tree to be a native tree.
Yeah.
Just only native? I mean, it'd be nice if it was only native. That's, talk about being restrictive, but I love that.
You're talking about what a tree is, what you're.
In other words, we have, we have street trees right now. We have, okay, we have different types of street trees, and we're in the process of re-identifying them. What are invasives? What are natives? And then what are non-invasive? They're not from here, but they, they do not compete in the habitat. So.
So what do you want to be able to cut down and control?
You can, you should be able to cut down an invasive species.
Or non-invasive, or what about a non?
Invasive, invasive.
So non-native, a non-native, we're okay with?
You know what, non-native, think of non-native as non-threatening.
Yeah, I, I.
It's like neutral.
I think we need non-native.
A tree is a non-native or native.
It still contributes to the canopy, but it doesn't contribute to habitat.
Right, but it contributes to our canopy.
Yes.
A non-invasive tree. And you can, I mean, the whole point of this is you can play with the diameter. You can play with front setback, you can play with heritage trees, you know? That defines what you're doing.
Right.
So I just copied a statute that looked like it had some controls in it.
We're working with it.
So I think we keep working with this.
Yeah, I think so too.
Let me just read a couple other thoughts that I have. I do think it should be reasonable for the board to allow somebody to cut down a tree, okay, in our new definition, if they intend to replace it. Simply, if, let's say they want to put a garage next to their house, or they want to put in a accessory dwelling unit, right? But there's a tree that stands in the way. But there's a perfectly reasonable spot they could put a new tree of the same type.
As part of mitigation.
Right. If it's a tree, then we don't want them to cut it down. And if none of these conditions apply, right? The necessity of the removal or the effect on the ecological systems, or anything in section three, if none of that applies, I think the board should still have the ability to say, that's okay.
Well, necessity, I would say necessity, in terms of put a structure in, the necessity.
It's not necessary.
Well, we could say it's necessary. We can use that. You could use that as your reason why you're.
All right, good enough. All right, so, fair enough, so necessity.
Perspective, right?
I suppose an arbiter, which is all the more reason why I don't want the DPW to do it, because it could be very subjective. Okay, the next question is, can placed trees be protected trees until such a time as they're protected under this ordinance? So here is the problem. They cut down a big tree, 12 inches in diameter, they put up three, four inch diameter trees. Great, they've met our code. Next year, they cut it out, because they're not trees.
Oh, because they're not.
Because of caliber.
Yeah.
Well, I thought they'd have to replace it. They have to replace them with a larger caliber.
No, you can't place large, you replace it with like diameter, or how is the word? I mean, a replacement of one tree or more in total caliber.
Okay, I don't like that one.
So.
I don't like the one tree or more.
Well, you can't replace a 12 foot tree with another 12 foot tree, right? You've got to grow them. So if we're telling them you got to replace it with two or three, but there's nothing that keeps that in place until it hits the same caliber, right? Now you just have a bunch of big trees.
So we keep cutting down trees?
Yeah.
So if you're gonna have a tree replacement requirement, that tree that gets replaced should be a protected tree until it's considered a tree.
That's a really good point. Do you see where we're going with this, Jeff?
Yes, that's a good point.
I'm like a man.
If you go that direction though, you can't require the total caliber to be like. Because if you plant four small trees, you can't require all four trees to grow into the one same sized tree. So you basically are giving up in the short term and trying to win in the long term. Does that make sense then?
You just put in the definition. Tree with a diameter of six inches of wood, point at which is four feet above grave based on the tree, or any tree which is in replacement of a, you know, how?
Tree removed.
Sure, if you add it to the definition of a tree.
Yeah.
Any tree that.
Any tree that was, that was, that was replaced.
Justin's.
What, to match the caliber of the tree?
Does this board want to hear applications to remove ash trees that are gonna die anyway?
You know, the ash trees.
I think you probably would.
I think we have to be.
No, no, I mean, I'm sorry. I think without this ordinance, you still would. I think Zach would come to you and say, we got the ash tree, it's gotta come down.
But I'm talking about on private property, you know, if I've got an ash tree and I know it's gonna die, that's just bad luck. I don't want to always have to go to a board and explain to them why I'm taking out a dying tree. That's gonna be one of the biggest requests, right? Because numerically, everyone wants to get rid of their ash, so.
Right, well, our ash trees consisted.
They're, they're different, because they're healthy.
Should we say diseased, should we say diseased trees?
Well, diseased trees are covered in here.
So you got to go through Steve and explain.
So we asked, ash trees are diseased, right? Would we consider ash trees diseased?
They are. They would fall under that definition now.
Oh, yeah.
So then they could be removed?
They, they can, but you still got to go through the administrative process. They're saying, do you not want to include? You'd say, you know, invasive or ash are not included in the definition of tree, because it's just.
Would you put something, a tree that's been compromised by some major disease?
Right, and then we have that in there?
You know what you could do?
Don't we have that disease?
Did we do?
You know what you could do? You could put something in here that the tree board doesn't do this, but the DPW does, with consultation from our village hired arborists, that they together could identify a diseased tree that needs to be felled, right? In which case, there's this unique provision that they could take out trees like the ash trees without going through this whole process. So they talk to DPW, they talk to Steve or whatever, we have an arborist on file, they go out to take a look at the tree, yep, this tree isn't gonna make it.
That's pretty much how it would work, right?
That would work anyway.
Anyway.
Because as soon as.
And it does now.
As soon as a heritage tree is gonna die, you want to give the DPW the authority to say, yeah, you can take it down.
That's what happened with the. That's where we are.
Is that?
It won't be the DPW taking it down in a private, right?
Correct, no.
You just want to give them the authority, the village arborist, the authority to say, yeah, that tree no longer constitute a tree according to this code. So what if in the definition of tree?
Healthy?
We added a line that said.
Non-disease?
Procludes any tree identified by village arborist as diseased and dying, or something. Like, you could put it in the definition of tree, but it's.
Well, if you did that, the oak that were, that itself would come down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I wouldn't want to touch that. I would just have, you know, discreet tree classes and.
But is, is, there has to be another mechanism, because it does talk about the ability to take out diseased trees. I mean, are we overthinking it?
Yeah, I thought we could.
You know, something that's a danger, it's diseased.
Right, right, we have that. It's in there.
I mean, I mean. Well, that's, that's in 192-6, but there's nothing about disease.
Well, then let's put in diseased. You know, that way, because I, I hear what Justin's saying, you know, that's a big issue. And maybe we need to put in. Danger to the health, safety, and public welfare of residents. Any tree growing on a real property and has demonstrable disease, or what do we want to say, has? Oh, that's so sad.
Well.
Yeah, so I think it should be under the removal section.
Yeah.
Because if any tree growing on a real property which constitutes a danger to the health, safety, and public welfare of residents, or is significantly diseased.
Yeah, something like that.
About or.
Yeah, okay.
Can you, I definitely wordsmith it.
Yeah, I got or, show, or is significantly diseased.
As identified by the arborists.
Right.
Yeah, based on an evaluation or something, yeah.
Based on expert.
I would say terminal diseased.
Oh, okay.
Terminally diseased.
Right, because if it's coverable, you want to make sure that they treat it.
Because there actually are people that do treat the ash.
Okay, that's a good one.
We have treated our ashes, ash trees annually, you know, and we're sort of wing calling them from the bird.
All right, do we have any more?
I had.
You're on a roll.
I, I like this.
But this is good. I think we really have a good discussion about this, you know?
Okay. So we did have comment on something about definition of tree is not a tree that was the one that got planted to replace another one, right? Right? 129-6-1, what was it saying? That seems aggressive, can you appeal or something? We'll leave that on that. All right, 192-6. Do you two leave the directive shall be in writing? Do we want to have some number of days? This one said three. That seems awfully quick. Shall we remove or seed? Yeah, that's basically.
You can't get anything through the post office.
We can't do that.
That's a hand deliver maybe.
Yeah.
But in the mail?
You can't in the mail. Yeah, but we're talking about something that's a danger. It's like, well, we'll just wait a week.
True.
Sorry it's hanging over your roof.
So then, so we send the mail, they don't even get it, and then we're there cutting down the tree three days.
I don't think we wanna do this, this way.
Someone's gotta get there.
I would say personally, or attached to the residents.
I was gonna say, why are we making, why are we making decisions for when the residents take away their dangerous tree? They're gonna take care of it.
Well, we just want, we're going through that right now.
I mean, no resident's gonna keep a dangerous tree hanging out, they're gonna just move on it. Won't know? Oh, okay.
We've got one right now.
I was just saying, we got one right now.
But then again, yeah, but then again, it's not really our jurisdiction, is it? I mean, it's their property.
If with this ordinance, it can be, that's what, that's what we're saying.
But this is, this is a dead tree, right?
Or danger, a danger, which is, you know.
Oh, I see.
You know, so maybe, maybe a branch is hanging, they don't wanna deal with it, it's a danger.
Take for example, most amazing tree across your property on the left, or the massively, big massive tree that's on the opposite side of the sidewalk, right?
Trust you for me?
Really, really old across the street.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's huge, right in the front, right in the sidewalk. That tree's starting to have serious concerns, right? And coming down on residents who are walking in or-
Well, it's a village tree.
No?
No, no, it's in the yard, it's literally right on the other side though.
So if all of a sudden, they're not taking care of that tree, and let's say it's diseased or a danger or whatever, we need to have something to-
But isn't that covered somewhere else in the village code?
So, no, no.
I don't think it would take.
That's a danger, that's gotta be covered.
This is the way this works.
Okay.
The, the building inspector or somebody comes along and says, "That tree's a danger." The building inspector then says, "Someone noticed," and in that notice, he says, "You must have the tree taken down by like-"
Or fixed by like-
Right, or whatever he says.
A remedy.
And if they don't do it within-
Three days.
Three days.
Thirty?
Or, the event property fails, no, and within the timeframe the building inspector sets.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
They don't do it within the timeframe the building inspector sets, then we come in, take it down, add it to the tax bill.
It's kind of like when you don't mow your lawn type of thing.
I was gonna say, okay, so don't we have that covered under something in our code? Like when you don't, like mow your lawn, or when you don't paint your house?
Specific.
Brush your weeds.
It's what?
Brush or weeds.
That's very specific about what we go in for.
Really? So if there's a dangerous, something dangerous in the village, we don't have that in the code that it needs to make a code?
Believe me, Steve is, is going through this right now.
Yeah.
There's nothing in the, in the uniform fire prevention or building code that would allow him to do it.
So say there's a shutter hanging off somebody's house, right over the sidewalk, maybe it's close to something, I mean-
I mean, I don't know.
I mean, what happens? Steve can't go and say, "You've gotta remove that dangerous object," it's gonna follow somebody's head?
He installs these messages.
I do not know if there is something in the fire prevention building code that covers that. I suspect that there is. There is nothing that will cover a tree.
Okay.
And even if there is, it doesn't hurt to put it here.
You know, I was just thinking about number two, because just getting back to like Steve and how, how quick action's taking, like it's safe, it's a stop work order. It's, it's a posting right on the house, and it's, you know, that's where I'm going with this, instead of in the mail and it's three days and- Why wouldn't, if it's an imminent danger, yeah, you just put it on the house, you call them, you say, "We have an issue here, this is unsafe."
No, it goes on.
Just the way you, yeah, exactly, exactly.
A lot of, a lot of times, the problem with that is that the owner is not the occupant.
Yeah, okay.
You gotta figure out a way to get it to the owner.
Well, it's at least a start.
So can I make a suggestion, Mayor? Out of time, we've done a really good job in looking at this, this is our first draft. Can we let Jeff go back and make the changes that we, we asked, and then we can come back and spend another segment of time at our next meeting?
Sure. Did you get one, I know, we need to get one more, that's why I was saying, I knew it was a ton of all.
Just one more.
One more.
All right, you ready for this?
Yes.
Uh, penalties if you like.
Yeah, you gotta be careful with this stuff.
All right, but here's the thing. You got a big tree, you got a big house. The fine is so small, that if you've got a major project, you just suck it up, cut the tree, stump it, hey, be done. It's too, and, and this is, this, this costs you nothing. And this is less than the cost of like putting in a couple nutrients even.
You just, you take the hit, you would just take the hit and do it.
You're using the hit on every major project.
What just happened to me when I lived in Boston, we had a over 200 year old stunning oak in the neighborhood. It was a developer that came along, wanted to buy up the property, and he was tagged, you know, that the tree, and the tree was identified in the code, in the town of Frithline. They cut that puppy down and he only had to pay, I think, back then, I'm going way back, it was like $500, he couldn't have cared less.
Yeah, yeah.
And he was so right about that.
This is where I think what you have is a tree illegally cut, the replanting of the tree appears in the same spot.
But that's interesting.
So they clear hide a significant heritage tree because they think they're gonna build on that spot without getting approval through the right channels?
Well, they can cut it for the selling of wood, or-
Sure, but then they have to plant something, we, we require replanting of some similar size, not similar size, but maybe worth of it, and that tree remains at that location. And if they cut that tree down, another fine. They cut another tree, another fine. So if they cut a tree down illegally, you have a perpetuity of fines.
Wash, rinse, repeat.
Yep. And, and so while it may be broken code, it's intentionally broken code to prevent them from taking out a tree.
In other words, it doesn't solve their issue of not wanting to have a tree here. In other words, you're here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's right. And it's, it's multiple fines, not a single fine, so you don't have the arbitrary capricious like million dollar fine. It's actually a single fine. Put the tree back, put the tree back, cut it down, fine again.
Because that solved that issue then of, you know, of, of too great a fine, because now it's really about the process of how-
Multiple fines, multiple trees, they just keep doing it. Anyway, I think I know.
I think we need to do a section in here, something like unauthorized removal of trees.
Okay, however you wanna solve that dilemma.
Yeah, I like that, a whole section on that, so it's really clear.
Yes.
So there's clarity for people.
I'm just throwing darts at a wall, but the penalty wasn't good.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yep.
Good job, you guys.
Can I get one comment?
Oh, yes, please, Jenny.
If you've taken down a big tree, you cannot plant a new tree right in the existing spot. Just for your language, it doesn't work that way.
Right.
You can plant a new-
Whatever it may be.
In the same spot.
Yeah.
I think we're just thinking, talking conceptually about it, you're, you're technically aware of it.
It's the idea of creating a perpetuity.
In, in the discussion, again, there are trees that are older than my house in my yard, and some of them have exceptional heart rock, you take a lot down, and you cannot plant a new tree in the same place. And the discussion here makes me think, you guys have not dealt with all trees and replanted yours.
So Jenny, it's just my own, because I've got an ash tree that I gotta take down, I wanna plant one right in the same spot, so how far, how far away do you have to go? It's dependent on the size?
It depends on the tree, and it depends on the stump.
It just depends on the tree, it depends on the root system.
And Jenny, I, I know that you can't plant one in the same spot, I'm just trying to figure out a way to have the fine be conceptual enough.
I get, I get what you're talking about, but when you're talking conceptually.
Right, when you're talking about language, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good point.
Yeah, no, definitely.
That's great, thank you so much for that. Okay, so you got your last one, and?
Good enough.
Okay, just, just scribbling away over there. Man, Lily, yes.
Before we continue, may I make the board's indulgence to change the agenda slightly? Uh, since Jenny has kindly agreed to come and address the board on regarding item number 10, pillars, restoration of village pillars. And I'm wondering if she might be permitted to approach and address the board on that issue out of order on the agenda.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, because I know she's been here a long time.
Oh, good, that's helpful.
Yeah, very helpful.
Yeah, if you would, especially for me, the heart of hearing her.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I was just wondering if you wanted to start this off. You want me to just-
Dive on in.
All right. I have a request. I looked at the columns on the front of the building, they all have this. I numbered them, south to north. Photographs, comments. Bob Corby verified to me this evening that the interior of those columns is deckwood. What you see out there, the square exteriors is cladding over wood structural columns. So the issues are at the bases. And all of them have issues. My thought and my suggestion is that because those, that basis apply, only apply, it would be a fairly straightforward project to remove the bases and replace them in kind that would also give an opportunity without excessive invasive observations to look at the bottoms of the structural columns to be certain that they are sound. My guess, the cause, particularly at fourth column farther north, is that water is spilling off of the roof. The roof on this, the roofing on this project, when it was replaced in the mid 90s, was, was my project. And I am familiar with the roof, but I was never on that roof. So I don't know if there's a guard on that roof or not. I've looked on Google Earth, sometimes you can zoom out far enough to see, I, many trees, I can't see. But my, my suspicion is that it's water pouring off the northeast part.
And really saturating that side.
Yes. I would suggest that someone who works in this office or is here on the regular basis, next rainy day, put on your boots, go out with an umbrella, and look and see what happens over there. So, in my opinion, it would be important to address certainly the columns, column bases that are exhibiting severe deterioration on the, on the bases. Replace those, take a look. It could be handled by almost any good carpenter. You wanna replace all the, all of the elements in kind, and I could be able to go to Home Depot, I don't think, to get all the profiles that you want. But I would, I would suggest a hardware down here. Behind the old Rochester Athletic Club for women, the building in the back. They have a good assortment of the actual wood.
Rudder bits.
Yes, not, not, not the home sizes. Lily also mentioned the porch floor out there, I put that in on my way, and it's marbled. There are a few individual pieces that look like they're 12 by 12, I'll take out my tape and measure them, that are a little rocky. I think that would be a very simple repair also. Because the ones that are rocky are where the, where there's no mortar in between them. So the mortar has deteriorated, deteriorated as well, and that's what's unstable. So there would be a different contractor, that should be a masonry contractor. The other would be, again, any good carpenter who can do that replacement.
Well, that's kinda good news. They got pillars at least.
So I wanna be clear about a path forward, that I would like to request this board, if they would be interested in obtaining bids, is that the word I'm looking for, or estimates, just like you would on your home? An estimate for the replacement of the trim. Let us call it on the first, the most severely compromised pillar as an investigative exercise.
Sure.
Because the others don't seem so severely compromised, so that we could conjecture that if that, that pillar is not compromised at its core, that the others are not. Because that's the worst one.
Yes, I, I think that's reasonable to, to look at that one first, as far as the condition of the structural element. But all of the bases have issues, if you're not going to replace them. Any place, on the second page, photograph number three, open joints, that's just-
Moisture.
The law is going right in there.
Yeah.
So, part of it is paint failure, which has allowed wood, wood rot, because moisture's gotten in it. I have a suggestion also about the railings, I did not include them because I know-
Yes, if I meant to.
You are all aware that the railings are-
Wonky, is that an official failing?
And I'm, I'm only talking about where the columns, where the, where the railings attach to the columns. And in all cases, the railings are screwed directly onto the column, which means that any expansion and contraction, I know it seems ridiculous to think about these short railings expanding and contracting up to be detrimental, but they can. So, a two-part fastening system would be preferred, in my mind. You have a, you have a plate that is fastened to the column, and then the railing is, it's, it's not fast and rigidly fast, it can move.
It breathes essentially.
Yes, so that you're not, you're not damaging the column with it. So those are my comments, and those are, those are my suggestions.
Can't thank you enough.
Thanks, Jenny.
I appreciate this so much. And if you had the name of a carpenter, a craft person.
Yes, I did just speak to, I suggested to Lily, Michael Ferber, who was the contractor for Pete and Joe Crookers. Is that right? No, brand name's The Crookers, but I-
Crookers, oh, Pete Crooker, yeah.
Yeah, Pete, yeah, yeah. What's his wife? Jill, Pete and Jill's house. He did handrails on the steps there on Southern Street. He did an excellent job. But I spoke to him yesterday about my daughter's house. He said he doesn't do any exterior work. What I asked him about was not as straightforward as this. So I think it would be worthwhile to ask him. This is a small little thing, he's highly qualified, the work he did over there was excellent. If he's not, again, on my daughter's behalf, I have a couple of other contractor names that I'll be happy to share with you.
Is that, is it F E R B E R?
F U-
Was it F U R?
F U R B E R.
F U R, yeah, I think I heard his name.
I have his contact information, but it'll be on, if you wanna look up the Crookers application at the H P B. His name will be on there, probably on the building permit as well.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
Thank you so much, Jenny.
Jenny, thanks, appreciate it.
And everyone understands that Jenny is an architect and also someone who knows, yeah.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you very much, because that was a great help to the village and saved us a great deal of money getting using our free consulting service.
It looks really nasty, but, and it will get really nasty.
If we don't do something about it.
If you don't do something.
Yeah, sadly.
At this point, I think you're all right.
It's solvable, is that fair, right?
Thank you so much, Jenny.
Appreciate it, Jenny, thank you again.
Thank you so much.
That's just great.
So as far as what's going out to, are we going to ask for a quote for the bases then, or was the action?
Dorothy, I think they went away in a little bit.
Yes, we, board knew, we were looking into this, when we were looking at the roof, when we had the historic architectural repair, the damage from the fire, we had them review the columns, they gave us a quote. We talked about the $100,000 we had for the back entrance for restoration, that the board didn't want to move forward. The mayor has been working with General-
General Esper.
I think he recently just got a, a verbal approval to ship that money, and one of the repairs was the pillars, the floor.
Yeah, the pillars, the tile, the wrought iron restoration, because it's all wrapped in duct tape.
Right, we got in the quote on the pillars and it's-
Yeah, the balconets that are crumbling. It, this also, and this is so great, because Jenny's really confirmed what Bureau had identified also in their report, I think it was 20, 21 years ago.
Right.
And so, you know, we're trying to take that $100,000 and, oh, let's put it in another part of the building that we know.
We don't, we're not guaranteed of that.
Yes, we are, she got the-
Yeah, that, that's what I sent out in the, in the email.
What I saw in the email was that it was a labyrinth process that had to be taken to the legislature.
Right, so we called Dazney and it's not.
It's not bad, they just have to, they gotta talk.
They just have to talk.
Ship it, then they have to do the steps, it's gonna be spring by the time we can get to it anyway. I talked to Maranachi.
Maranachi?
No, I can't say his name.
I know, I wanna say Mariachi.
I wanna ban. He says we should seal up the pillars to protect them for the winter. He feels they're solid inside, and then do our rest, just basically what Jenny just said, and do our restoration in spring when we get them on.
And Steve, Steve is already taking the measures to properly seal the pillars, because Steve's, you know, that, he can do that. Right now, he oversees a lot of this building anyway, so he, he took a look at it today. He can make sure it's, it's secure, so there won't be any additional water damage. And that's what Mary, I think Mary, do you worry about?
Yeah, he, he responded, he doesn't see a problem waiting until spring for the column repairs would cause any further significant damage, I recommend sealing any open areas on the columns to prevent infiltration from the elements, so.
And then, and the money, the fund center would be repurposed to just pay for all the work that we need to have done.
That sounds great. I would really, I would like to request that we have the-
How are we gonna steal this?
No, Steve, talk to Steve, Steve has 40 years in the business, he has done significant rest of wood, yeah.
You're gonna steal it up.
He, he's like, I'm on it, we said Jenny has looked at it, he goes, "That's great, this is how we can take care of it." It looks terrible. It looks terrible, but it is absolutely solvable and we can secure it in a way to address it in the spring, because the funds will be repurposed. We're not going to be able to get any contractor in.
And to be honest, we don't have any budget, budget money set aside for these repairs for this year.
So that's why we're repurposing $1,000 grant. Again, I'm gonna make a request. And that request is that we have this young man, his name was mentioned, and another craftsperson, if we know them, come and give us an estimate for replacing the trim on the most northerly pillar, which seems to have been most compromised. Just give us an estimate for the work. How much is it gonna cost? I think we should do that for sure, anyway. I think we can get, we definitely should get more estimates. I mean, I'm totally fine with that.
I'm just saying we have a plan already for work and just securing the pillars for the winter is.
Well, I don't know if I, I would like to hear what the plan is, because it sounds like you're gonna be wrapping garbage bags around these things.
Oh, no, my God.
Or gigantic big wood pieces.
Wow, no.
I mean, this is gonna look quite different actually.
So that is conjecture in your head. That's conjecture.
Well, I'm just trying to imagine how this is gonna happen based on the amount.
Okay, someone who has numerous historic properties dating back to 1850s in different cities, I can tell you, this can be properly and very nicely secured to get us through the winter if needed. Okay, it's not about, oh, we're gonna tarp the whole thing, no. And Steve, Steve just talked us through it today. We can have Steve address this to the board, send out how he's gonna do it, talk about how, you saw Ace even has stock trim on stuff. This isn't, I think this is going down a bit of a calf, and I appreciate all the questions, but we have professionals, Jenny just confirmed everything in terms of how we're proceeding. I mean, I think that's great. She's a professional. And Steve has done this work as well.
Well, that could be great, I guess, you know, I'd like to hear about how this is gonna be wrapped and what the plan is there.
And I just saw that, and Steve talked to the board.
I'm also a little bit skeptical about bundling this with a lot of, if this is something urgent that we need, and we're saying, yeah, this is gonna fit in with $100,000 of other projects, I just think that does open up another can of worms that might make this take even longer. And I want to make sure that this is addressed.
Can you talk a little bit, let's talk a little bit about who, was it John Maranachi?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to look at the restoration work that was done after the fire up under the Yves? I strongly urge you to do it and I dare you to tell us where it happened. He, John Maranachi, and I sort of mentioned, Jenny knows him. Bureau recommended him to do all of the restoration work, they're one of the top in the region. They do, they did the George Eastman House restoration work. This is the gentleman who looked at the pillars and he just said, it can wait till spring as long as we properly, you know, just seal it and make sure that there's no additional massive water damage. And we have the funds, we're just going through the process of repurposing them with the state. I just don't, I just, you know, the pillars aren't falling, Jenny said they're not compromised. Yes, we need to address it, we're putting our pieces in place. I think we're all in a pretty good spot moving forward, and I like the idea of getting another bid. I always think that's a good thing.
I thought we always have to get another bid.
We're going to have to get it.
You know, we are.
We put the project out, just like when we did the bid on the back entrance. It's gonna be a whole bid package.
Right, all right, I guess that's where I'm having to disconnect. Is that I'm asking the board respectfully to consider this pillar on its own as an investigative process and to have it repaired, perhaps, let's say we get an estimate, I'm gonna make something up. What if we get an estimate, it'd be $2,000 to have this, this one pillar repaired and investigated. Okay, so it's $2,000, we don't have it in our budget, and we know we have $100,000.
Can we replace it?
No.
We can't replace it, we can't pay ourselves anything.
No, it does not work that way with, you can speak to that process, because we can.
You can't spend the money before it's all settled and the final paperwork, we got the verbal approval.
Right.
So what do you think the money will be here?
Spring.
So that we have to wait till spring?
And let's be honest, getting contractors out is very difficult, especially for the village, for small projects and this historic building. And just, and I understand what you're saying, get this gentleman out. It's different when you work on a municipal building. They have to pay certain wage rates and there's a whole sense of things, and some people don't want to touch a municipal building. She might be absolutely right, he might be willing to touch it. I don't have money in the budget, the board would have to make a decision where it's coming from. I'm not saying don't get the estimate, we need, obviously we need estimates.
Why don't we, why don't we just start, why don't we start there? Why don't we get the estimate in? Yes, let's get the estimate and we'll see.
And then let's discuss it, but we could also, and Steve can give you how he would handle it and we can.
Yeah, I want Steve to reach out to the board.
And we can see if we're just comfortable holding till spring and let's get the money resolved. Let's use the grant money that we repurposed before we lose it. I mean, we need these repairs.
Well, let's get the estimate and see what this other person does.
You know, the other thing too, and this goes back to, we've had such difficulty getting contractors and, you know, getting responses, to have somebody come in and do one pillar, if they knew that there's a larger bid for all four, we may get a better price, it may be, you know, it's gonna sweep the pot a little bit.
That's actually, that's the point I was, I wanted to make too. I think it might not cost that much more to do four than to do one, because they've got already hallway materials, get the router bit, get it set up. So I would say, you know, we can ask them if you do one and also get a quote for one.
But I agree, it needs to be sealed up and protected. And, and I don't want to see tarps by any means. Like you, I first thought of blue tarps, no way.
At least white garbage bags.
I have to say that, also in speaking with Jenny and with someone else, that, at the time, I can't remember, nevermind. She thought it was very unusual that a grant would be, would be awarded for one project and then transferred to another. She said it just does not work that way. So I said, well.
It can, our representative, when I, the board made the decision not to move forward with the back entrance, I went to him and I said, well, here's the situation. I don't know what you need from me. My board officially said they don't want to proceed with this project due to the increased costs, because it went from 120,000 to 250,000. He said, we're seeing a lot of that. I said, so what do we do? Basically, we're giving up the grant. He says, well, you have other projects similar in nature that your representative, when they deem this, are willing to sign off on transferring it. And that's what we've been working on, and we needed to get them estimates for all these repairs, so Mary could go to her and say, this is what we're looking to repurpose it to do. So it's, we're still working on the back steps, they still.
And that's part of why it's, yeah, it's just not gonna be as elaborate as it was.
It's not gonna be elaborate, so we'll be working on, if you go to the front of the building, that, those stairs going down by that pillar, they need some work, those are gonna be repaired, the wrought iron, the pillars, the balconets.
And the marble.
And the marble. So, all that's included in what we asked the Senator to.
Yeah, and I would like to speak to that, and I think, I think it's, if we were saying, okay, you funded the apples, now we're doing oranges. We're not, because what sort of sweetened us was, we still are addressing some of the issues, just more modestly with the back stairs, and we are retaining the use of the funds still for this building. In other words, we're not saying, no, can we use the rest to put in a pavilion down on the canal? No, it's like, we're looking at the building in entirety, and that's how it was presented to them. And that's, that's why we got the buy-in, I think, because it's like, we still need to do work on the building, just in the front, not so much in the back. And I think that's, that's why.
There's a form from Dazny that has to go to the Senator to sign off.
Yeah, okay. But we'll get a report.
Yes, we're working on that process right now.
Right. And as we know, that Jenny was, you know, was with Bureau, and the original assessment of the columns was Jen Aaron's, looking at the columns, and also saying, you know, this is somebody, which they also recommended, Bureau recommended, to do the Yves Maranachi.
Right, he has a fair amount of right to.
Because he has a known expertise to get some cost.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I agree with you, so that's the information. So we'll get another estimate.
Absolutely, we will get an estimate.
Yeah. Okay, great. Yep, sounds good. Okay, next up, where are we here? Short-term rental. Yeah, oh yeah, the moratorium, okay. Yep, let's bring that one up. We need to extend it. So the proposal is that for the board to consider is the extension of the moratorium. And that's gonna take a little bit of time and also work from Jeff. So that, I think, looking at the timeline is why I'd like to bring it up this evening for consideration, and to see if the board is interested in giving Jeff that directive to write the language of the extension for us to consider at the next meeting. I think we, I agree with you, I think we need a, yeah. It feels that way, I mean, they, I think the short-term rental committee asked for an extension, because a lot of their members were traveling. Was they, is it the summer? Yeah, so, they're not ready to report to the board yet, and if that's their position, that they're not even ready to report their, their progress thus far, it doesn't bode well for that being done by, I think it was January is when the moratorium ends.
Can I, can I make a question? If we're gonna go and do this extension, is there a room or is there ability to put some specifics in per request? I mean, I really am not comfortable with, I mean, I understand the Fair and Independent Board and that's all fine, but I just, I just.
They're not an independent.
Well, they're an independent advisory committee, right?
Yeah, they're working in your direction, you know.
Right, so I just feel that we should have a little bit more connection with them. I just think that we kind of set them on their way and there's just not been very much oversight. So I would like to see maybe some expected outcomes that we're asking from them, for them to, to give us a report. I would like to see a monthly report from them.
A monthly report.
Yeah, I would like to see a monthly report. I don't think that's, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay, no, but I mean, this is something that would be needed for the.
This is definitely the moratorium.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if we're gonna do a moratorium, we can say the next part of it can be with these guys.
Okay, hang on one second, Jeff's raising his hand.
Did you just say different than moratorium?
I'm sorry.
Did you just say different from the moratorium?
I said separate.
Separate, yes, that's what I was.
So, do we, do we, before we get into this, do we want to just finish off the moratorium component and then speak to?
Yes.
But I guess I was just saying that, so in other words, if we're extending the moratorium, we can't extend it and then add in these other suggestions?
This is a moratorium.
This is separate.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, I'm in agreement with the extension of the moratorium. I think I would entertain a motion that we would direct Jeff to. Do we need a motion to direct you?
No, just tell me to do it.
Let's do it.
We don't need a motion.
Do we have to give them a time period?
Well, yeah.
So six more months?
Extend it for another six months.
That gets us to a year.
That would be a year more, which is typical.
We can, yeah, we can.
Yeah.
And I think, well, Jeff's right, and you see, your comments make sense. I don't think we need to make a motion to it. I think we just simply ask them.
And I think what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna have Alexandria send you all what has been done, so you guys are kind of brought up to speed. There's also, she just, I don't know, she signed it out, but she just let me know, I guess because she was working internally administratively with the board. They are, they're having a conference call or a Zoom.
They have probably already had it.
Oh, they might have already had it?
And done.
Oh, okay.
Today.
Oh, I knew it was coming up, like, so, they were just kind of regrouping, where did we need to go from here? They were given directives and the board had seen that when the, when the group was first set up, so maybe we can revisit that again?
This for you.
Maybe we can revisit that again.
The resolution or something other than that?
No, there was other material as well. So what I'll do is then, tomorrow, let's sit with Alexandria and make sure everybody has the directives and what, where they started, you know? And there've been a number of board members that have been highly interactive with, you know, Alexandria just following up on stuff and, we want to look at this type of code or, you know, can you help? So I think, I think you're right, there probably hasn't been very much direct communication back to this board, but I think Alexandria can really help us out with that, because she's really been, been on it, yeah. Yeah, Lily. Yes, I was reading in the minutes, because I wasn't at that meeting, and I believe, I don't want to put words in Trusty Coke's mouth, but it just, it seemed as if the question regarding liaison was misunderstood. I believe that Trusty Coke was requesting a liaison from this board be available, or be a part of that board, not a member, because Jeff's answer to, to her question was that that they, the committee would choose their own liaison, and I think what, that's what it says in the minutes. That's what's in the minutes, that was actually what was adopted. Right. That the committee, that that committee, if they so chose, would then direct a liaison to the committee to respond directly to our board. That is, that's what we had approved. So I think the original question was, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there be someone appointed, I assume by the mayor, from this board to be the liaison to that, typically that's happened with other committees that have been formed. We made one of us available as the communication, you know, back and forth, just like I am for H P B and Justin is for. Yeah, those are, those are appointed boards conducting business on behalf of our village, legally, this is my understanding. Having served on, you know, steering committees for like the Comp Plan, the A T P, for, you know, the town and also.
We have a liaison to you.
Not always, but I'm just saying, they were available as needed. They actually weren't there, so they were called on as needed. That was how. Yes, so nobody was assigned except Alexandra, but specifically speaking, you are the liaison. No, but, but what I'm trying to say, what we approved in the minutes is that the, and this was my understanding, was that the committee would pick, elect a liaison to, if needed, if needed, it says if, if needed, to come back to the board. I just don't want to feel that there's any other sort of pressure on this committee other than, please do your job, please update us, please do Alexandria.
And my fear is, I don't know if they know what their job is, that's my fear.
I haven't gotten that feedback, except from one person who I spoke with at length on three different occasions.
Have you got that feedback or not? You don't think that they felt that way?
No, I didn't, I didn't. No, I didn't. I had one person, who we both know, who said they had concerns about other members of the board and whether or not they were stepping up. Spoke with a few other people, there was not that concern. So, I think, you know, they're all residents.
Well, you know, the best thing, you know.
I just don't want to be messing with a mojo.
When we get a report, then I think.
Let's see where we are. That's the only thing I'm thinking, I just think, they're residents, they're volunteering, they're stepping up, I think they're, they're all interested and want to be engaged, and I didn't come away with that, just speaking with a number of them, and I, you know, and I think it's important that we do kind of understand that they need something, yeah.
In many respects, the short-term rentals can be perceived as black and white, even though there are shades of gray. And so one of the concerns may be that if you have members of the committee who are on different views, for some, it's all or nothing, one way or the other way. And, you know, I can respect those opinions, and they may have been driven by, you know, thoughtful, thoughtfulness, right? The challenge remains to us to, if we are receiving recommendations from the board, what we also want to do is understand the unique differences of the committee or the expressions thereof. So, what I prefer not to get is one stated, here's the recommendations, though that's what they're charged with. My preference would be to have, these are our recommendations based on the majority of our board, these were the other considerations.
That was the directive they were given.
I don't know, I read it, but that's okay.
No, because when we, when I, I just met with them to say thank you, and I just said, you know, it's not everybody that's being locked up, but, you know.
If they're not, it'd be good to hear that difference.
Yes, exactly. Because I, that's why we have the diversity of the residents and people giving input and, you know, nothing, you know, they're not writing legislation, they're not, you know, they're just sort of weighing things and each person comes up, or maybe there's know, they're just sort of weighing things, and each person comes up, or maybe there's four people who say, you don't want them, and then there's, you know, it all comes back.
It may not be a consensus, that wasn't their charge.
Exactly, but that wasn't a consensus at all.
But see, what I'm really looking for is I'm looking for them to give us some research-based suggestions.
Yes.
You know, this is what Elegant Phil's been doing, they like this because this, this is what Norfolk, you know, I just want them to do some, some evaluations.
That's exactly what they're doing.
Okay, good.
That is precisely what they're doing.
But that's okay.
Precisely, precisely what they're doing.
When we get the report.
Yes.
That'll come to light, okay.
Yep. That, that was the takeaway I had, that was the takeaway the majority of people in the group had.
Okay, good, good.
You know, that they were, they were each taking, you know, different areas, and, and my, my thought was, can you at least keep it in New York State? Because now, you know, we've just sort of vetted with other communities, you know, that kind of thing, at least kind of try to at least state what are other villages doing, other towns, you know, that kind of thing. That was the only thought I had.
I look forward to the December.
There was an advisory outline that they received that we had received as well recently. And the deliverable, as it's quoted in that, was a written report with the group's recommendations to be submitted to the board trustees. When I read that, I just simply read it as a singular recommendation, not.
Recommendations.
But not a broadly, sort of, if you go this way, this will be, and if we go this way, this is what we've seen, this is what is defensible in New York, this isn't what's defensible in New York, you can limit by number, like, so.
What if we do this?
That's just, I don't, I don't mind giving them the autonomy to have any things for it, think it through and do the research and work, and then try to come to a point of having recommendations. What I'd like to see, though, beyond just the recommendations, is the different avenues that could have been considered that were legally defensible as well, such that if we as a board are thinking that recommendation isn't quite the direction we wanna travel, what could we have considered different?
Let's do this. I think everybody's got a lot of good thoughts on this, and everybody has their perception of what you want this group to do. Why don't you all write up everything that you're looking for from this group, each of you, and let's distill this, give it to Alexandria to present to the board, how does that sound? Because it, it seems as though somehow, all of this has been missed in some fashion. And so I think we need, we need, we maybe need additional direction from the board.
Well, you know what, I'd like to see what was given to the board, to the advisory.
Well, we're sending that out, but regardless, I think regardless.
But maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's.
I don't see that, I don't see it that way. I think no matter what was given to this board, I think now at this point, it's important that the trustees weigh in and give direction to the board.
Well, I wanna see what was given first, because I'm not gonna read.
We just said that, ask and answer and cover, ask and answer and cover.
Soon as I see that, that's perfect.
A hundred percent, and then I, I really think everybody should weigh in.
Okay.
A hundred percent, okay? Because this is too important.
When do we think that they're gonna come to us? December.
December.
So, yeah, December 12th.
So are we going to get a report from the short-term rental committee at the next meeting?
No.
December.
December.
That's what was sent, sent out.
Got it.
Everything that has been done to date, we're gonna put together in a package, I will have Alexandria do that.
Perfect.
And send it out, every single thing, all the inquiries, all, you know, every single thing that she has handled, everything that this board has done. In return, I'd like this board to give additional direction very specifically as to what they want, because I'm hearing different things ahead, and I think it's important that we don't come away with, wow, that didn't happen, and now, okay, let's, let's, you think they need help?
We don't have a lot of time though.
Right, let's just do this, let's push this forward, six months, bingo, right?
So this is, this is the resolution we're getting, and this is where I think we'll be delivered to the committee match, this is what I said in my email. The committee shall report to the board of trustees and make recommendations to the board of trustees as to what type of short-term rental controls, if any, would be in the best interest of residents.
Yep.
That is the only deliverable, and that is what you deliver. So unless we're planning to change the resolution, they're gonna give us what we asked for to the comments that you previously made.
Can't go anywhere else with it other than saying, they may need additional direction that you'd like to give them from this board, to make sure you're getting a deliverable that you all are, are wanting.
Can we amend the resolution?
No.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I think you just say.
It's a directive.
Yeah, we can.
In addition.
Yep.
To doing this.
Yep.
Could you please include in your report other alternatives that we're discussing?
Why don't we just say that?
That's what you just said.
Can't we just send him an email that says?
We can, of course, do that, that would have been my first choice, but what I'm hearing is a lot of different things. If that's something we all agree on.
Is that language okay?
Is there more you'd like to add?
I just wanna see second.
Okay, so give me the exact language.
What did you say, Jeff?
Yeah, that is good.
Good guess, too great way to weave words. Are you a lawyer?
In addition to what we're impressed with the resolution, any alter, any other alternatives that we'll discuss with the board?
Yeah, it, it seems like what we're going for is that the, the recommendations, the focus is not on a converged, singular recommendation of legislation, but we're looking for.
Or well-researched options.
Various opinions.
Right, well-researched options.
Yep.
Okay, so can we just clarify, it's not, it's not changing the, the resolution at all, it's just saying, to clarify, when we said recommendations, we meant that plural and divergent.
Yes.
Not consolidated.
We will make sure that, and before this is sent out, we will have this word, Smith, and we will send it to all of you to make sure that it's accurate and, and very specifically what everybody is looking for. So we have a level of clarity and agreement amongst everyone here and with an understanding of what goes to that board.
Yeah.
Does that, does that help?
That's fine.
Does that help?
Because, from my perspective, I wasn't looking to give them any guidance at all, I am looking for guidance from them.
That's why they're there.
To pulse.
You bet.
And give it to us.
Okay, have we sufficiently discussed this? Is there anything else you'd like to add on this particular item? No, okay. So the action is, and just, Dorothea, just also, I'm writing this down, but in case I miss it, we will craft the language with Alexandria, because Alexandria's really in it.
Yep.
Send it all to the board before anything goes back to this particular committee, so we're all on agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the action.
And then Alexandria will, along the materials provided.
Yes, and she's, exactly, she'll send out all, anything that they've received, whatever, you know, they're looking at.
I'm not looking at recommendations, I just think it's good to have something.
I, I think we've vetted this, I'm hoping we can move on because of the hour.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have that. The Monroe County spotted lantern by trap project, a very good project.
I'd say let them do it.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems pretty easy, it's not gonna put anything out of our budget, right?
It was a good thing, too.
Yeah.
And we're primed.
It's one little thing, let them do it.
They're just gonna put up some bags.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think they're only putting up one.
Is there a specific ask with this? I mean, that.
We tend to put up the traps.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, just so you guys know, the Santa Fe Zoo Society, when they came through, it was a couple of years ago, and they had looked at all the imbasins in the Arboretum and were cataloging, they helped us put in the Palinaker Garden, they had offered this project as well, and no action was taken at the time, but this is great, that it's coming back now through the county, so.
So do we have to do anything?
Do a motion.
Yeah, just do a motion to, to.
Authorize the trap.
Authorize.
Can I make a motion to authorize a trap for the spotted lantern flies?
Why?
Do I have a second?
A second.
Oh, we have stereo, okay, roll call, please.
More quick, traps or traps?
Traps.
Traps, as much traps as they can.
Yeah.
Traps, whatever they wanna give us.
Trustee Lichen?
I'll go about it.
Trustee Lancre?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion to.
Okay, look out, you spotted lantern flies, we're on it. Okay, next up, discussion of the village bench cost and materials.
Okay, so you, you should have that in front of you. The bottom line is with the cost of shipping and the cost of the bench and the cost of the plaque for each bench, it comes out, this is now ippy wood, I want to point out, this is Zach's recommendation, he said it does not require the upkeep or maintenance that the oak does, is it weathers naturally, he thought it was more on a five-year program, the ippy wood, and so it comes to roughly $1,600 per bench, cost to us. So the question.
The direct cost to us.
Direct cost.
Direct cost to us.
Not installation or anything? No, okay. Well, no, I kind of, did I factor that in? I kind of did not. So it is the cost of the bench, the cost of the shipping, and the cost of the plaque. It does not include the cost of the installation, so $1,600 per bench. So my ask, and of course it's up for discussion, is that I felt that $2,200 was a, I hate to use the word reasonable, an option for the benches. As I mentioned earlier, we have two individuals who are specifically in, very interested in the price, obtaining a price, because they want to donate a bench. The third bench is covered by village funds, which have been specifically set aside in the amount of $2,500, so that would definitely cover the bench, the plaque, the installation, and somewhat ongoing maintenance in the future. My position on the maintenance, when we discussed it earlier, is that I view the benches as a village amenity that enhances our streetscape and our general quality of life in the village, and as such, should be a part of our tax base and not an extra added expense, it's just part of doing business in the village, people expect amenities for their tax money, and I think this is one of them. So I feel that $2,200, which gives a cushion of about $800, I'm not that great with math, someone correct me, of ongoing maintenance into the future.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
See, my math, same math, I just wanna buy shoes, something.
Okay, I'm right there with you.
My justification, it's about $699. It's seven hundred, no, it's six, yeah.
And also, there's no tax, because we're taxed.
So we, yes, we're taxed for that.
Just see.
So that, that is my, my pitch, if you will, for the benches. What the board decides to do after these particular benches are purchased and in place, you know, that remains for another meeting, another discussion, but at this point in time, I feel that the ippy wood is what our D P W superintendent recommended, and this is one of the few companies that provides ippy wood benches.
So Lily, can you tell me who the three benches are for?
Pardon me?
Who are the three benches for?
Um, I don't know if I'm supposed to say in public, but.
Oh, you're not?
No.
Are we not allowed to say?
Yeah, because it hasn't been.
They're gonna have plaques on them.
Yeah, are they gonna have plaques on them?
Did they?
Are they gonna have plaques with the person's name on them?
They, they will be also wanting the plaques, it's $15 per plaque.
Have they ordered them out, if they're all in agreement to it? I mean, I know where this, yeah, they want.
In other words, when they pay $2,200, I'm saying, I'm proposing this as a, an option. If they pay $2,200, they get the bench and they get a plaque, an engraved plaque with whatever they want to say on it.
For how long?
What?
Yeah, for how long?
So that's the, the other question. I hear the amenity component, and I agree, but there's also the component of the long-term maintenance, and when, when does the bench actually age out? And that has been the discussion, as we know, with the D P W, because they've been scrambling and repurposing sometimes, you know, so I think we.
In your respect, I think that's another discussion for another time.
Not really, because you're.
I just, these three benches, that's all I'm talking about.
Wait, wait, Lily, hold on. Are, are you saying that, that the person who's gonna have a plaque on is gonna pay us $2,200 to have a bench put in, or you're asking for us?
Yes.
Okay, so they're gonna give us $2,200?
Yes.
And so there's gonna be $600 out of the village, village costs, and we're gonna end up paying per bench?
No, no. No, the 600 is the cushion for us for installing the bench and future maintenance.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's what, okay.
It just kind of rolls into our.
We're banking that.
Okay.
Again, so you're.
Money over the hands.
So the question that I had asked Zach, and I believe he, he did address it, what does it cost to, to keep these benches kind of going on an annual basis, you know? And he, he had given us the numbers a long time ago.
But that, but they, let's go back, let's go back to Lily for a second. You didn't wanna tell me who they're for, but we are asking the families of these people with the plaques for the $2,200 per bench.
In other words, a person, there's a person who lives here in the village, a man has called me a number of times.
Right.
And he keeps asking what he wants to donate a bench.
Yeah.
How much is it?
Yes.
What does the village want? And so I wanna go back to him, pretend and say.
Tell what it is.
It's $2,200, and this is what happens.
Right.
You get the, an ippy wood bench, and you get a plaque with your dedication on it, and the village installs it.
So all three of these benches are covered by private people that are paying $2,200?
Except for the third.
Except for one.
Two are covered.
Okay, two are covered, got it, got it, okay, that's what I thought, all right, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have to vote on this? Is that where we go?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, that's why it's here. Yeah, yeah, hang on, you had a question?
Yeah, I just can't recall, are these going, we've already decided on the locations, do we?
I have not put in the applications, because I'm waiting to make certain that we're even getting the benches. One proposed location, I sent pictures to the board, and it's at the top of Northfield Common, where Chain's Alley comes out to State Street, and I walked it with Zach and also with Trustee Coe, and determined that there is a, a, a spot right there. The other is to, proposed in front of the Phoenix Building as part of a donation from.
Donor.
From a donor, okay. Village building owner. And the other gentleman lives on Lincoln Avenue, and he is receptive to whatever spot. So one of the spots that I also sent a photograph of is in front of the bookstore.
I love that.
That's available.
We could face the other.
Facing each other.
Love that.
And so that's a possibility for bench donation location. And Zach also pointed out, across the street here from Village Hall, sort of facing near where the new park someday will be, there's a brick apron that was placed, and he said that would be a perfect place to surface now.
But that's for future, that's, because that's number four, there'll be a for future.
He's just identifying locations. And traditionally, Zach and the crew will help identify some places.
Yes, but he identifies.
If we decide to continue the bench program, right? Because we are bench overloaded.
What we didn't have in place, I don't think for the past few years, is a program where perhaps three or four of the benches were taken into D P W during the winter and refurbished over the winter and then replaced on a rotating program. Not every bench needs to be refurbished every year, it's more, especially at Baywood, it's more every five years. It's more, especially at Baywood, it's more every five years. So it's, you know, he gave a figure of, I think, of about $500 to refurbish a bench and hopefully that will last for another five years. But I think on a rotating, it's really difficult to put a, a figure and work it into his, I think having a cushion of $600 is reasonable because that takes care of the first 10 years.
Well, I agree if, if we have a time period.
Right.
And that's where I think we need to really discuss time period. I don't think that somebody having a bench for the next 100 years in the village is really feasible.
And, and also we could maybe take a look, because so many communities have these donation programs and I, you know, I've, I've lived in communities where they age them out, you know, it's like your donation is, is for the next 10 years to, for the care and the maintenance of this bench or whatever is being donated. We could take a look at what other villages are doing. You know, maybe, maybe that's something you could maybe, you know, check into that. That'd be good, yeah.
I guess, uh, I think this is, um, a good discussion. I mean, it, it seems like, uh, you know, 26 benches is, is good, but the concern is that 2,600 might maybe pass the point of satiation and, and they're not so helpful anymore. So, um, and I, I imagine we're, we're on the same page about that. And, but I, I think that the idea of benches is nice. I, I know that we've agreed on, on one of the benches. I would even be willing to, to just move these three forward and, um, but with, uh, something that maybe Jeff can help to suggest, which is that there would not be any guarantee that this bench is permanently maintained with the same plaque forever. It would just be, uh, for the period that it, it happens to hold up. After which, um, the board is considering a maintenance plan for all benches and they might be refurbished and, and re-designated accordingly.
So they not give that person a specific time period yet?
No, we'll, we'll do what it rules on. You'll get your plaque for now.
Okay. Don't mind that. I guess not going to be forever.
They could get their plaque back.
I mean, I'm okay with keeping the, to your point, I mean, you could say the bench for its reasonable life, or you could say 10 years.
I like reasonable life.
Reasonable life?
I think that gives us more leeway.
But I'd like to be able to consider if somebody 10 years from now comes forward and says, hey, I know this is a costly little one. Are you willing to take my $2,500 to put my name on that bench? And I'll pay for the repair for the next 10 years.
Right.
I mean, I...
That's, that's what it should be. Well, it's...
Well, that's where if you, with these benches, to Justin's point, you know, you kind of want it to be flexible enough that there's no absolute to the Navy rights.
And I see that that...
Until refurbished.
Until refurbished.
Until refurbished.
And then, and then a new plaque gets put on, when the new stain gets put on and it's going to be a new, right?
It may continue and may not.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I'd say this, you want to make a word to vote?
About, I think, from a practical standpoint, is that when the fence is refurbished, you're talking about that plaque.
Right.
And so you could give the person the option of coming to collect their plaque or pay, or pay more money.
Yep.
I don't think it needs to be $2500, but pay more money to have their, that plaque reinstated.
For the next five years.
So no more new benches.
We'll just keep it there because we're nice and we don't have anybody else replacing it.
But it's our options.
We're not having that decision.
Because we're managing the benches.
Yeah, we don't have to make it official.
That's right. We don't have to make the, we don't have to, I'm just trying to leave it, our options open so we can commit and get this done and then make up whatever policy we want.
Yeah, because I think we should move on to three benches.
So that Lily can tell these people that you get the plaque over there until...
This is how much, make them pay anything.
What I like with that statement, I'm even okay going down in 2,000, not 2,200. They're covering the cost, they're covering the shipping, they're not, we're not, we're not even repairing it. We're saying, once we get to the point of repair, we might take your name off.
Yeah, but we might not because we might not have anybody.
I can tell you right now, we're only thinking of repairs in terms of when it actually ages out and needs repairs. I can tell you, there's broken slats, some stuff gets dimmed, people run into stuff cars.
Keep it.
You know what I mean? We need to cover...
So I'm going to make a motion to approve three benches for $2,200 a bench.
I think...
No?
Yeah.
I think you're, you're going to make a motion to approve purchase by the village pursuant to this invoice.
Okay. I make a motion to approve three benches pursuant to this invoice brought about by Lily.
From Crowd Control Warehouse.
From Crowd Control Warehouse. Do I have a second?
With the amend, I'll second that, with the amendment, however, that we do not, we will not be paying tax. So it's, we have to back out $339.32.
Minus tax.
So...
Minus the tax.
The invoice, the plaque fat. It will be flat.
I will just say...
So we are...
Yes, wait a minute.
And that we will pass 20, the last residents, 20...
Well, it could be the same.
So that's a second one. One is just a purchase.
I'm just going to tie it all in.
I'll second buying some benches.
All right.
So we have a second.
She's got a second.
Second question on, any further discussion? Oh, quiet group. Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Co.
Hi.
Trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Trustee Lightyear.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi. All right, three benches.
Okay, Lily. You're in, finally, with a lot of work.
My brother now.
One more.
Now we've one.
You gotta, you gotta, you gotta charge these people $2,200 a bench for the plaque until the bench is refurbished.
So that's the second motion. Anybody want to make that one?
So...
So move ahead.
I'll make a motion to offer residents opportunity to purchase a plaque on, uh, set of new benches at a cost of $2,200 to remain in place at the village's, um, you know, to remain in place on the bench for, until refurbished and/or at the trustee's discretion. They're after.
They're after? Good one?
Yeah.
Okay, because that, that covers it.
Yeah.
My second.
Okay, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Yes?
No, no.
Oh, she's, she's, she's ready. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightyear.
Hi.
Trustee Lampier.
Hi.
Trustee Co.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
All she does.
Okay. Bench city.
Okay, good work, Lily.
Thank you.
All righty.
All right.
Okay, moving along. Just the update on the Refuge District Bulletin, the draft to send out.
Looks great.
Okay, you know, but everybody, I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look, but, you know, feedback, please, and then we can, you know, move it forward.
So what's the process then? After we have the feedback and the trustee's approval of the survey, then are we just going to email blast it to all the residents?
Yeah, we'll use our constant contact. We'll send it out. It has the capability of doing the survey, so they'll be able to answer the email directly.
Okay.
We'll get those results in, we'll pass it on to the board. You'll make a decision and then we'll look at the steps to implement a district...
I was going to say, so do we have to have a public, um, hearing?
Yeah.
We don't know yet. Okay, so we'll take that. Even though, even though we have a survey?
I'm sure you have to, to create a district.
Yeah, okay. All right.
But you can have one anyway if you're required to.
I have, yeah, some residents point out to me that they have not been receiving the email notification. Does that mean that they would also not be getting the constant, con- contact on it?
The constant contact and the, that website email thing are two separate.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And what I've done in the past is I go and I take all the emails from people that sign up on the website and merges it into the constant contact, delete the duplicates, the website. I don't delete anybody off unless I get an email directing me to. I'm not sure what happens.
I'm going to chime in because I think what happens when people sign up on the website to receive, you know, information, they many times just think they're signed up. They get a confirmation email back that says, you must click on this link.
Oh, you have to click on it.
And we went through a number of residents, they're like, how come, you know, when I, there's a little link, oh, you know.
Extra step, yeah.
There's an extra step and might get caught in your spam filter.
I know, because that's another thing too.
But I do not, unless I get an email directing me from a resident, remove anybody from the list.
It's a big, it's huge, it's, it's big.
Yeah, I think just, if, if anybody on the board wants to test it themselves, I have heard the same thing from several residents, they haven't received it. So I just signed up myself the other day, so...
Would you sign up? Did you just verify?
I, I clicked on the link to verify. I have not received any emails.
Someone sent out a test.
I sent out, uh, last...
Oh, yeah, that went out.
Friday.
Okay, so I'll follow up, I'll check.
Could you try, could you do a test to the board, just us?
Nah, not, I can't.
I'll check myself.
It's a whole merge.
It's a whole list. All it's, the list is broken up and this might be another part of the problem, what they signed up for. Did they sign up for HDB? Does they sign up for zoning? If they signed up for everything, I sent it last out Friday with this meeting information.
I don't think I got it. So I'll follow up with you to make sure, to verify the subject.
Yeah, I said, if there really is some other problem, we really need to...
Like I said, we're looking to move the website.
Oh, yeah, it's a hot mess. Okay, but that, thanks, we'll follow up because we need to know.
All right, so do we have any action item on the Refuge District?
Well, I just want to get feedback.
Did we want to do nine?
Well, no, hang on, we just want to close out the Refuge District Bulletin. Everybody can take a look and just give some feedback.
And let us know when we're ready to go.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah. That's what the process is. We're going to wait for you to...
It's not a overly pitchy, it was fairly, here's what we're looking at, do you like the idea or not?
And, you know, I think just like the question, you know, not a lot of questions. Do you want, are you interested in...
Yeah, well, that's great.
You know?
So if it works good, then we'll send it up, get it set on.
Do we need to have, if not, why?
No.
No?
We don't, we don't need to know.
No, because, because, you know, if, if we get enough information, we're going to hold meetings, you know?
Okay.
People will be able to weigh in. This isn't a one shot.
So we'll work to get this out to them in the next month.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up, discussion on crosswalk safety at the Northgate Street Bridge. Yeah, I spoke with Renee, um, actually at length, and, um, there's a couple, couple things that we, we arrived at the same conclusion. One, we definitely, we can do a petition, you know, and she's going to work with Walk By Pittsburgh to help spearhead that, which is great. Because they're all pre-qualified, they're all, you know, they're all in on this. The issue really isn't about the beacons. What, um, and Renee and I are going to walk it again next week just to kind of get the feeling of it. Because this is something that we keep circling back over and over again with NISTOD. Because what happens between cars exiting the village, when they come through the four quarters, like, come past Village Hall, there's nothing to slow them down. There's nothing. And then there's that rise and then the beacons. And so it was a small child, she was probably 12 or so on the bike, you know, just didn't have that line sight and it was a truck. I mean, it was not good. Nothing to do with the beacons, nothing to do with the bicyclists. It is this section.
Right, that they flag over.
Yes.
Like a roller coaster.
So we're circling back again in the petition that we're looking at. Petitions have to be very specific and ask for a specific action. And it's going to be, we want this sidewalk here and we also want to look at some type of signage as another cue potentially. We need to really think through this, you guys, and, and when, you know, Renee can help come up with something, um, we'll bring it back to the board. You know, just even slow pedestrian crossing ahead, you know, something to, just, you know, one more cue for somebody.
Right.
To me, the big thing though would be the sidewalk crossing there to get people to slow down. That would be huge.
Plus it takes you right over the canal, that little canal, the park right there.
Exactly, and we have made this case, but one thing that I was thinking, and let me run this by you guys, you know, the, um, the cannon, the Howitzer that was stored down at DPW? Pulled it way to the middle of the street. You run my line. Right, we'll load it. That went for speeders. Yeah. With a, with a paintball. Okay. I like that. I do that. However, there was a different thing that happened. So, um, the Howitzer is no longer there, it is now being shipped to be restored in someplace in Georgia, or I can't even remember what it was. And the Legion's all excited about it. And what they want to do is they're negotiating with the town to have its permanent home across the street at the Veteran Memorial Park. Now we may have a little more leverage with NISTOD saying, this park is being expanded, it is, you know, this new gift to the community, we now have additional traffic. We're just trying to make the case. So that's kind of where I was going with it, you know?
We've been in town improvements to the vacant lot.
Pardon me?
Holiday hots.
That'll be another thing. They're not going to do it for another year, but...
Right, but we're still...
We can add.
Oh, yeah. Let's load it up.
Two, two very public spaces.
Good one, good one. They're, they're, they're being activated in a bigger way.
Great.
So, you know, this is how I, and I've said this before, the group, I mean, you just have to keep up with NISTOD. And just, so sorry you said no, hi, we're back.
In this particular instance, it sounds like we're going to really just focus on one thing first.
You kind of want to go for the win. If you do a lot, you know, the big, you know, random shots, you don't get what you want. But there's another piece that I want to bring back to you guys. The director who oversees the canal path system is going to be here later this week and, um, I'm going to try to meet up with her and Zach is too. And I, I want their support to take a look at putting in the crosswalk on the other side of the State Street Bridge going to Shane Place, because the canal path crosses there as well. Same issues that we had here. Can we get a crosswalk? Can we get, because the traffic speeds right over that bridge, right down state? You know? And identify it as a pedestrian crossing, maybe flashing beacons or some other signaling there. But I want the buy-in also from Canal Corp, you know, start getting, getting the bus. So I just want to put that out, that we've, we've looked at that for years, you know? And again, NISTOD says no. Why did they say yes here and no to the very same situation at another bridge? It's all continuation of the canal path. Yes, you know?
At one point, it, it works on the State Street Bridge, but of course one worked on this bridge, is to have, uh, on the overhead flashing pedestrian crossing ahead on that.
They wouldn't put anything on the bridge.
They wouldn't put anything on the bridge.
We're still circling back. But I just wanted to kind of bring you up to date. That's kind of where we're going. So we'll report back again after I walk with Renee. Okay, next up. Okay, we did pillars, uh, long-term...
Newification. Okay, just a suggestion, I want us to kind of think about this, I want you to think about this. I, like I mentioned it last time, that I was wondering if there's any way that we can possibly entertain looking to one nursery for a contract, for a two, three-year contract to do things like for spring, urns and super pots, summer, our flowers, winter, our holiday wreaths, fall, our mums and our plantings. And then we have 12 public parks, so that anything that we need for replacement or plantings, this is what you, Zach told me, you know, if anything dies and needs replaced, some bushes or some plantings. And we bid this out to a couple nurseries and see if we can get a, a contract so that we don't have to revisit this.
I have no problem doing that and I have to, I want to look at what other villages are doing.
Yeah, that's a good, yeah, do some research.
Yeah, just because it just seems so labor intensive for you guys, it's always every season.
If anybody has any prepared of these or requests for...
And also, was it effective?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
It was a little...
The only consideration I would put in, into this is I think the wreaths are gotten from someone outside of Bunshoes.
Bristol's has always done the...
Right. I think that we might need to separate because like I think, I'm guessing, I don't think Bunshoes does the wreath.
No, they don't.
Right, well, we would have to see if there is a nursery that can do everything.
So it might, it might be how we have the request for proposal.
But see, you could see what other villages are doing, that would be good. Because again, I said, I think that we waste so much time trying to do that every single season, every single year.
Yeah.
A lot of manpower.
Honestly, I think when we, I was at Webster, they did it every single season.
Didn't they?
Yeah, a lot.
Alright, well, just something.
I feel where you're coming from, if we can lock it for three years, obviously, space and money gives us.
And time, so much time.
Okay, so we have an action, action item on that one.
Okay.
Alright, uh, next up, memorials.
You want me to state for memorials?
Well, did, did you want to have an executive session about the?
Sure.
I mean, yeah, I mean, because.
I don't need today, I, I can punt. Yeah.
Okay, well, I love the sports analogy.
Sports medicine.
We had the Reno, oh, well done, well done.
We had the Reno, mental.
I know. I think we're good then, Jeff, thank you so much.
I did have, but I have a question, though, in memorials, if I could.
Oh, okay.
And this is just an affirmation of what I think I already know, just to reaffirm. Any of us at any time can talk to property owners and/or developers about ways to bring ideas and opportunities forward to the village, right? You can talk, I will always indicate that you are not speaking of the board. Right. As long as you do that, although there are certain developers who will hear your words and say later in public, they told me. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure I could even get a meeting conversation going with certain developers. Anyway, so you've got to be cautious of that, because they will, no matter what you say, say, but you told me that we could get.
No one's name and age.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just be, be very, very cautious when you do it. Generally, it's not a recommended way to go. It's not great to be talking, and maybe you have to talk to residents, because you are, you represent them. But it's not great to be talking to applicants individually, or even developers individually, because of that dynamic.
I mean, pretty much, I mean, I, I always thought, you know, you preface everything with, we're not conducting any type of business in any way, shape, or form. This could come back to our board, I, there's nothing, you know, any, any very specific questions or information, we have staff at Village Hall that can certainly help you out.
Yeah.
You know.
So just be careful, if you're gonna do that. I think you have to talk to residents, that's your job.
Yeah.
But always say, you know, I'm not speaking of the board. Yeah, for sure. That's just. Just making sure. Careful.
No, it's a good question.
The, that's all I do. Oh, I did have one question. So when it comes to things like money from the state, or money from the county, or possibly even the town, so probably not. How is it that we find out the programs and the opportunities that are in front of us? Does the state communicate with Village Hall? Does the county communicate with Village Hall?
We receive notifications on certain grants and different things. Sometimes, like the state money, we're talking through NICE dot and that NICE dot.
JASI.
JASI. That's where we've actually gone to our senators or assemblymen and said, hey, we got some great projects, you think you can help us fund it?
Got it.
So that's a different kind of conversation. Anything with grants, like, there's certain things, like, we know there's an OCRB grant every year, we know there's certain things, and that's when we apply.
Yeah.
But any opportunities, they typically receive emails.
There's bulletins that come out.
So this.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, what we're also doing is we're setting up sort of a perpetual grant calendar internally, so, you know, so we, we kind, a lot of these are cyclical and seasonal. Even if we don't take action, we just know what's coming up on the calendar.
Yeah.
So it's, it's at least information that, that they can keep, that they can straight up in the house.
So, one of the next ideas is, if there are considerations for spending that we might like to see if we can go find money for, do we have it within our purview to just simply reach out to the state and say, hey, if I come forward with this project, can you get us some money? Can I do that?
If you're talking to assemblymen or.
Well, yeah, I was thinking, anybody who's elected, you can always have some money.
Right.
I'm shameless.
Yeah, okay.
The one thing you can't do is, let's say.
Or really write a grant?
No, no. You can't fundraise, you can't solicit funds in a certain way. Like, it wouldn't be, let's say we decide that we want a new clock, I can't go door-to-door and say, can I have 20 clocks? Can I, I can't do that.
To the public.
Yeah, you can't to the public or business owners. You have to be careful how you do that, that gets really.
You can do it to politicians.
You can do it to somebody who, at the state level.
Right, you can say to the state, you think there could be some funding?
Like to officials?
Yeah.
Yes, they, they do that all the time.
And have, okay.
Yeah, all the time.
I would like to add, just speaking about a clock, like, you can't, the clock that we have was, was donated. In other words, that was an offer made and a gift to, to the village. On the other hand, the benches are donated, you know, things like that, like, I'm thinking, even with all the flowers and stuff, I would love to have a program with the business owners underwrite and donate our flower baskets, because they are significantly costless, you know, things like that. But you can't say, you know, help us put a wing on the building.
Yeah.
Right.
Unless you're going to be.
But if we wanted a wing on the building, we could go to the state and say, hey.
We need a wing.
Well.
We, we need a wing on the building.
Right, it's, it's how you do it.
Yeah.
Sometimes the things we might ask for are pipe dreams, sometimes there is reality to them. And, for example, I believe at the county level, they have a sidewalks program that they're encouraging right now. Do we have things that we want to get done, that we know we need to get done, that we, or I, could enjoy the spirit of fundraising with? Do, so, so for example.
I would say sidewalks, road projects, anything you can find money for.
So the question is, is do we need an official, what do we need to have official, if anything, for me to just go, hey, can you come up with, like, to the county or the state, hey, you got 50 grand for sidewalks?
Well, we have to have a project identified.
Then you bring it back to the board.
Right.
Process. Should you bring it back after or before?
Go ahead.
Typically, when you're asking for money, it's, you say, we need sidewalks on South Street.
Yeah.
This is an issue, they're not in ADA compliance, they're, you know, they need to be repaired, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And then we got the grant, we got $100,000.
So we need to know all these things.
Yeah, you kind of want to have the shovel right, but, but I want to talk about the county programs.
Okay.
Typically, you, you're awarded the funds if there's county roads coming through, and you want to redo the sidewalks on the county road. We don't have any county roads. I just want to, because I know about that program.
Yeah.
So you kind of weigh, like, where's your best possible win?
Right.
That's all I'm saying, because you, you can really get, go down a rabbit hole and stuff.
And at the state, you could ask for anything.
Unless, we can sit down and talk, we can talk about it, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for.
This goes back to where we were saying, the more you have engineering and marshmallow ready projects.
Shovel ready projects.
Exactly, the easier it is to get funding.
And things that are broader in scope, okay. So, all of this brings us to my next member item. So the state of Pittsburgh was a lovely event, we heard from the superintendent and the town supervisor, and from Mayor, so nicely done. One of the things brought up then was new to me then, and I'm sure you know, which was the idea of the DPW relocation. So my question is, is. Do you want to share more?
That actually, I just put it out there, because I think that, you know, we, we obviously have all the, all the immediate needs of, you know, oh my gosh, it's the sidewalks, it's the roads, but we also have to have vision, we have to really look to, what, where, where are we going with all of this? So we have an arboretum, we have a canal, we have a canal path, we have a town preserve, and then we have a facility that takes care of our entire village infrastructure, plunked down in the middle of it. I think we should really try to look to relocate that, how do we do that? When they said, oh, where are you gonna put it? What am I gonna say? Oh, I have no clue? I'm like, oh, we're working on it. You know, I want to put that idea out there, I think it's important that we at least start this dialogue, we, you know, and I was, we're gonna bring, that was gonna be my member item.
Yeah, perfect.
So, good, you know, and I thought, hey, I'll throw it in the speech, you know. I think there could be some opportunities, I think it is a discussion, if we get any further with stuff, we would go into executive session about it, because it may involve acquisitions or something, potentially. Nothing more than, we have a facility there that I think, and when I, first year I was in office, we had the Galisono Institute for Sustainability do an entire energy audit, they looked at that building. We could adaptively reuse that building, take off the sides, seal off the concrete slab. We'll have the bathrooms there, because we're gonna put in the bathrooms for our, our crew, with shower, laundry, locker, proper changing areas. They can be repurposed for public use, and an amenity for boaters along the canal. Solar roof on the building, that could become a public pavilion and a picnic area now, with an arboretum adjacent. You can moor your boat, there's amenities, we can get revenue, you know. That is where I'm thinking that we can possibly take a look in the future. Are there a lot of moving parts? Absolutely. Is it a huge project? You bet, but we better start thinking about it. Why wouldn't we? Why wouldn't we take a look at that? That whole area down there is beautiful. And it's got, the DPWs in the middle of the money shot, you know, it's like sitting there in the.
Okay, so I'll continue this, but to the next one, which is, the only way that type of thing gets done, which is, I think, a good, you know, part of the reason why I'm looking at the canal path, maybe some of us have differing opinions, is because we don't want to create an access, well, I'm speaking to you, but if it were me thinking about, how might this path prevent a bigger opportunity set? And by creating a small solution, we, we lose track of the big picture. That's not how I'm gonna look at it. I think there's short and long-term different goals and objectives here. But it all speaks to the long-term comprehensive, or the long-term capital plan. So everything we're talking about here says, where are we getting the money? My idea of going to the state or the county, you know, shovel-ready projects, things that we want to do that we just can't afford, could we have to do these things instead, right? Stormwater and drainage, because it seems like there's more rain than ever before, like, what's our region infrastructure, what do we need to, anyway, all these things. So, the more we chatted about it, and all of us have talked about it, the more I feel like I want somebody from the outside helping us do this, right? I just, I feel like there's a little bit of a unknown, either internally or externally, and personally, for 10 or 15,000, whatever it might cost to set up the next 10 to 15 years in budgeting and major decisions, I think it's reasonable to have somebody come help us. So, unless there's staunch, like, digging in against that comment, I'd like to have an RFP crafted to reach out to a consultant.
This is member items, and so we really shouldn't be taking any type of action, so let's.
Take it from the top.
You raise it, so we could put it maybe on an agenda, you know, bring it back, you know, to discuss, and, and flush it out a little bit about what, what you're looking at.
I, I would like to follow up on that as well. I, I very much agree with trustee Marshall on this. I expressed in the last meeting that I was a bit frustrated, that I, I don't feel there's been a whole lot of movement towards a multi-year capital plan. And I, I think that is, as trustee Marshall was saying, that's gonna hold us back from any of these bigger inclusion items that we have, as opposed to taking care of the infrastructure. So I, I think an RFP could be a valid direction for that. I was also wondering if we would be willing to just float to our contacts at MMB. If this, at Mankor, Mescul and Bar.
Mango Mescure.
Yeah. I know, it's, you know.
Our accounts, if, if they would offer that kind of a service to prepare a, a long-term capital plan based on the reports of, of different departments. So that I, I just, you know, not, not to officially take action on this, but just to float a line to them and say, hey, can you do this, and what might it look like?
I have to reach out to them anyway, because my end on the financial side, I've taken from the contours sheets, is still there, is still, I'm waiting on the capital.
And I think part of this, too, is, it's not just having the information, or having us have the ability, it's a deliverable to the public, to engage in a public in a way that we can go out and essentially ask for money if we need it, and here's the proof as to where it's going and why it's going in this direction.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're all on board with that, for sure. I mean, I think, I think, you know, we're really having some discussion stuff.
So, do we, so, can we, should we put that on the agenda for next, next meeting?
No, that's the next question.
Yeah.
Are we, are we meeting next week, or do you want to wait until?
I want to.
Pardon me?
I would like to.
What's, well, the question is, what, what would be on the agenda? I mean, how much is on the agenda?
Is it something that's immediate?
You don't need me for this discussion.
No, thank you. Is there any other question for?
I do have one question for you. If we don't meet next week, do I have to wait till the end of October to have an RFP be approved?
I'd do it as a special meeting.
Yeah, can I do it tonight in a member items?
I would not, I mean, my answer would be not recommended.
Okay, does anybody want to have a special meeting next Tuesday night at 5:30 for half an hour?
So, for the purpose of.
Putting in an RFP and getting this long-term capital plan started, because we have a budget coming up in less than six months. I would just do it now, there's no prohibition against it.
We, we, we're taking an action, I'm like, these are member items, this isn't something that's agendaed.
Well, I, I think taking an action to move forward a long-term capital plan is a valid thing to do, even if it's against our, our best practice policies.
I'm, why wouldn't we just do it next Tuesday at 5:30?
If you're good with that meeting, I'll be. We'll have a meeting next Tuesday.
That was the question for.
I'm here with that.
We'll do it next week.